All those things. It begs a discussion. But that appears to be the problem. I said I'm reading well. I'm only, I'm only included. Because things come up with the course, which I understand. Things come up, but I feel like I should know something about it.
If you want to read about activities, you can read about it.
That's just what we're saying. It's like, we shouldn't be doing this. But that's what, that's what we're coming with.
It's just five hundred million dollars. Which gives the mayor this much. Because it's the same deal, they're reading all the money. Some appointed body, where the mayor may not be able to develop. They have, so Mayor Daley, ten fifteen years ago said, "We're going to dedicate a billion and a half dollars to our school." And that's three years. That's what he said. You know, it was all tip money. So that's, that means that that's why he's had five hundred million dollars. He gets, he gets, here. Which is, and, and, yeah, and that might ultimately be the issue. The council's reduced to two weeks' hours. Two weeks' hours. Yeah, I don't see any complaints around this. The council's getting it.
I got your email. I think, I thought that's what they meant. They wanted to mail the letter for the second. For the, forget that other one. That first reading order. Not that one. The letter for...
For the, yeah, didn't I, isn't that the one I sent?
Oh, did you send that too? I saw one for that. I'm trying to find it in this.
Um, it's been tried. It's, well, let me see. Part of the plan, five or six years ago, when they had an ignition fire.
I thought they said, the farmer was saying that it...
Part of it was wanting to be...
It made it sound like you were going to go retroactive.
Yeah.
The tax law for the city of South Bend. And I don't believe that that cost you. As far as, as far as, as far as I think, it was a big money. Or a pack cost because it didn't make a lot of sense. That's the one Jerry was talking about. Jeff Givens, I think Jeff Givens. He had all that. They were grant plans.
Yeah.
Didn't say, that's what I...
That's the formality.
Oh, that's just...
Do you want to take that?
Well, because, we need to know if someone's coming here.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm saying. That's the one I just sent.
Oh, oh, you just sent that. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get that one.
Okay, yeah.
So you sent them in separate emails?
This one I just sent fifteen minutes ago.
Okay, I will look, maybe I...
That's ours.
Yes, hey.
Yeah. I haven't seen you again this much. I mean, I haven't heard you say it. I usually got a sent to us.
I presume you might already have one, but there's the...
Okay, great.
One to one.
One to one?
Yeah, we just go one to one to one.
You only gained the council.
Well, you're a coach. I've changed a lot of these. In Alabama, we only can see the Cubs and Rays. I don't know why you're tired of them.
I think that bothers you. What do you mean? I don't really bother by that.
I'm still mad at them from 1982, when they beat us.
That's right.
And you know, the worst thing about it, we started out winning that game, and it started to rain. And they called it. And we were ahead. And we should have gotten it. And then after that, it just turned against us.
It's karma.
No, it was just, it was bad up firing in that game, it was a whole bunch of stuff.
I remember. I think we got one over here. Hello, how you doing? Yes, indeed. I'm doing well. Okay, please do. Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, a message to you.
I just want, oh, I'll give that. You want to know?
He must think that works.
No, this is mine. Seriously, it's all to you.
All of those guys?
Oh, it's good. I appreciate you. Marco.
And I recognize you look so wonderful.
Is it a nice?
Hi, Jen.
That's good, I appreciate you.
Just call security.
Oh, for who? For Sue?
Yeah.
You see, you do hear what John said? Come on, your boy.
Now she's going to put her hand on the hip. Oh, oh, ooh, ooh, ooh.
You know, by this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got it right here. Got it. You do all the presentation, okay, Jennifer? Jen, I use this all the presentation. My wow.
I just have these three things for you. This here, this is almost our entire yearly budget. Big box of bills. Can I take this?
Cool.
It's in the same line.
What are we using these official records for? What are we using these for?
We use it for my post.
Oh, right, but where does this normally come from?
This was from...
There's no money in it for all of it?
We used some of that.
I still like reading up there.
Two thousand total. And we found three million.
Yeah, and how much is it? Is there enough to cover this? How much is in that?
We have that one.
Okay. Um, yeah, you can take the rest from official records. But, don't take it from official records, you need to transfer it to this. That way, if we need to increase our budget, we can show that we went over, so we had to transfer money. But if we just pay it out of a different line item, we won't be able to...
That's just like you.
Okay. Do I have P O's too?
Um, yeah, you do have.
Okay, just leave these here, I'll get back from this.
I hate ads. I hate ads.
You did this, and you fixed that one, like, right there.
Yeah. And we had, the resolution that quieted, so I was like, yeah. But I couldn't do that, because I can't modify PDFs. I did, I said that. Okay. I sent it to her, so she made that change. In fact, we got that here. So I think we're all set. What's that?
That's a program.
Okay. I've got a faculty guy in my office working on it, so we should be okay.
Good evening, the Monday, October ninth, Common Council meeting is now in session. Would you please rise, as Douglas Sparks, Bishop of the Episcopal Diocese of Northern Indiana, is here for our invitation. Thank you, sir.
Oh, Holy One, God of many names, who has given us this good land for our heritage. We humbly beseech you that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and respectful manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties in fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hitherto of many kindreds and tongues. Indue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom, in your name, we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that we may show forth your praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in you to fail. And this evening, send down upon those who hold office in this city of South Bend, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their office, to promote the well-being of all people. This we pray, wherever we go.
Thank you.
One of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe you see it. If you would, please turn yourself on to the panel. Ms. Fowler, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Preston.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Broden.
Here.
Councilmember Varner.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Fordy.
Present.
Councilmember Ferlick.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you, report on Subcommittee on Minutes, please.
To the Subcommittee, to the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Subcommittee on Minutes has inspected the September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the council, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
May I see your accept? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Special business, eleven seventeen, please.
Okay. Yeah. Eleven seventeen, a special proclamation of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly recognizing one hundred year anniversary of the historic sanctuary at three ten West Monroe Street as the site of the first African-American church in South Bend.
Sir President.
Regina Williams-Preston, eight three eight North Elmer Street, South Bend, Indiana. I just am so excited tonight to be able to recognize and honor an important historic celebration of the first, the founding, the roots of the first black church in South Bend. We have a number of folks here tonight coming in just in time, please join us. Come on up. And I'd like to also thank the folks who were actually, which I know everyone, all of our council members are in support of this, most specifically Councilman Randy Kelly is actually co-sponsoring, and Councilman Oliver Davis. And just very excited to have an opportunity to share this moment and recognize and honor this historic occasion. So we begin tonight with the special proclamation of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly recognizing the one hundred year anniversary of the historic sanctuary at three ten West Monroe Street, the site of the first African-American church in South Bend.
Oliver Davis, eighteen oh one, N Street. Whereas African-Americans have been on the front lines of the struggle for freedom and equality throughout American history, the black church offered not to spill the religious material suggested into the African-American community, but as an organizing and often political force, proved to be central to the very survival of the African-American people and the endurance of their culture and traditions. And whereas in eighteen seventy, Reverend John Bundy organized Olivette A M E Church and established its first African-American church in South Bend, the sanctuary was erected at three ten West Monroe Street, as a center of social, religious, and political life for the city's black community. The church placed great emphasis on the religious and social improvement of the local black residents. And whereas after almost fifty years, the original structure was replaced by the concepts written, built on the same site, and dedicated forever for nineteen seventy. The new entrance served as the house of worship for the Olivette African-American African Methodist Church until nineteen sixty-nine, though it was sold to James and Bobby Baxter, who boarded up the stained glass windows and opened its doors to the century. In nineteen eighty-one, the building was restored to a place of worship, when it was sold to the Wray Christian Tabernacle Church, and later leased to the Zion Hill Missionary Baptist Church, and...
Whereas the future of this historic sanctuary came into question, when in nineteen eighty-six, it was purchased by South Bend Redevelopment Commission as part of a land acquisition for the construction of minor league baseball stadium. As current occupant, Reverend Robert Howard Derrickson, president of the Ministry of Alliance and pastor of the Zion Hill Missionary Baptist Church, understood the historical significance of the site, and was determined to protect the legacy that was indeed the physical roots of the black church in South Bend. To this end, in nineteen ninety-five, Zion Hill purchased the sanctuary from the South Bend Redevelopment Commission. Whereas after the death of Pastor Robert H. Derrickson in two thousand five, his son, Reverend Chris Derrickson, became pastor of Zion Hill, continuing the work of his father's ministry and making a mark of his own. Under his leadership, Zion Hill became headquarters to the South Bend chapter of the international civil rights organization Rainbow Push from two thousand seven to two thousand ten, and more recently renewed the tradition of service by partnering with the South Bend Cubs to serve breakfast for people in need in the surrounding community. And whereas, two thousand seventeen marks the one hundred year anniversary of the historic sanctuary at three ten West Monroe Street, the site of the first African-American church in South Bend, we take time to reflect on this important milestone. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the South Bend, by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana publicly celebrates the legacy and history of the sanctuary at three ten West Monroe Street as it stands in its centennial year, a physical representation of the roots of the black church in South Bend. As Olivette is the mother church, three ten West Monroe Street is the cradle of Pilgrim Baptist, First A M E Zion, and other congregations continuing the legacy of service for African-Americans in this community. Section two, this special proclamation shall be in full force and effect from and after adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few people here who are the presentations and the legacies. I think it's really important, one of the important pieces of this story is that our community had the foresight to recognize the importance of this, this particular building. And while all of this development is happening all around, not only was it preserved thanks to the works of the families Derrickson family and Zion Hill Baptist Church, but it also actually, it has become a part of the development that's happening. So I think it's a wonderful thing by actually partnering with the preaching out, rather than having any sort of contention between what's happening with the new development and the old, and the history, we're actually working together to preserve the legacy and continue it forth in this redevelopment. And that's really has so much to do with Pastor Derrick Derrickson here today.
Pastor, just state your name and address, please.
Chris Derrickson, thirty-nine oh one, Brooklyn Drive. Well, to the council body, and particularly to Councilman Preston. It gives a great honor that you would bestow such an honor upon this church that has stood in this city as one that proclaims the word of, word of God, and also lifted humanity. And so, I'm one of few choice words, except for getting behind the pulpit. But it humbles me that you, the city, would recognize this church and her great works, the churches that came, that spawned from her, the church that started it all, and the building of what it represents to the black community. And you have my solemn oath as a minister of the gospel, and a citizen of this community, to work with South Bend when we're needed, to help in social causes, to give a lending and prayerful hand to wherever this church may be needed. So again, I just thank you, and I'm deeply gratitude to, in the service that you bestowed upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it to council. Any council members, Ms. White, you would like to say anything?
I would like to say that I've had the privilege of being under your father as my pastor, and if I'm not mistaken, my common missionary Baptist church came out of the church that is standing now. And so, I feel as if I have a connection with you, and also with the history of the church, and I'm very happy that we're able to present this proclamation.
Congratulations on a hundred years, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, it underlines the importance of not only being aware of, but learning from our past. What we were, and what we are now, and what we will be, all depends on, on, you know, that shared past, and recognizing and knowing that past that we've shared. So thank you very much.
Doctor Dick?
Congratulations on your anniversary, and congratulations for your next hundred years.
It's a delight to honor you, your history, and this amazing legacy of faith, but also faith in action. And I think that's really the hallmark of why churches do endure. And so, in gratitude for that faith and that service that we, as an entire community, have benefited from, and continued wishes for more fruitful years in service. Thank you.
Bill? Congratulations on this milestone, and most importantly, on how you are continuing to pay this legacy forward in such a meaningful way for our entire community. Thank you so much.
And for myself, I agree with everything that was stated up here. You know, you look at the basic blocks of a community, and its people, you know, it's the jobs, it's the homes, but it is the houses of faith that really make our community. And that word was used quite a bit in the proclamation, and you used it yourself forever. And community is truly what inspires and what is needed, and I agree with Ms. Broden on action. And thank you for the action, thank you for being the rock within the middle of our community. And, you know, much more to come. Thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
I wanted to just recognize in the audience, a member of his living history, I think it's the great, 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 great grandfather, I'm not sure, you can tell me how many greats, John Charles Bryant is here, his ancestors, direct line, were actually some of the first charter members of First Black Church Olivette here in South Bend, in this, on this site. So I wanted to just acknowledge him today as well, thank you for coming out. Appreciate you.
We're not remiss when we see John Charles Bryant sneak into the room.
That's right.
So thank you, sir, for coming. Is, at this time, we'll open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proclamation, please come forward. Seeing, anyone daring to wish to speak against this proclamation? Seeing, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt the acclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you for everything.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. At this time, we do not have a report from city offices, but we do have Mayor Voodoo Judge in the audience, as well as Suzanne Fitchburg, representing the city. And Morris Sullivan, I'm so sorry. Rookie mistake on my end, not yours. With that, I entertain a motion to rise in the committee of the whole.
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed.
The committee of the whole is now in session, this is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. With that, would the city clerk please read forty-eight seventeen?
Forty-eight seventeen, public hearing on in ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending a section of chapter two, article six of the South Bend Municipal Code pertaining to tax abatements.
Could I entertain a motion to accept the substitute version?
To move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. The Community Investment Committee met today, and we send this forward favorably. Linda, is there a representative? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Regina Williams-Preston, eight three eight North Elmer Street, South Bend, Indiana. This bill comes to the council tonight after much consideration, I think we started this process about, well, back in August sometime. We, the bill proposes a change to the current tax abatement ordinance, to actually add a requirement, that applicants for a tax abatement actually will pay all company employees a minimum wage, at least as high as the minimum wage paid to all employees of South Bend, upon the confirmation of that abatement. And since that time, we've had lots and lots of conversations, of course, among council people, citizens, and current business owners. And we've added some things to that, to include that this would begin January first of next year, that it would clarify that we would include tip workers in the process for making sure that tip workers are compensated fairly as well. This is just an opportunity for us to actually live the words that our mayor set forth for us. His goal was that we become, as the city of South Bend, a model for equal opportunity, and make, by making sure that any business that comes to South Bend, that receives a tax subsidy of any kind, actually lives up to our expectations and pays its workers a decent wage, is just one way that we can begin to live out those values. And so, I'm very proud that the committee sought for to see this as a, send this favorably. We had a few other things, one of the things we clarified, for those who've been following this, is that the, the business would agree to pay all workers the minimum wage that the city pays in that first year, but then the second year and subsequent years throughout the tax abatement, they would actually increase that, two percent every single year. So it's an exciting change to me, because we want to make sure that we are not just supporting the people of South Bend, bringing jobs, not just jobs, but good jobs, but we're also being business friendly, and we're paying attention to the needs of the businesses by making sure that they have some predictability as much as possible throughout the time of their agreement with the city.
I just wanted to say a couple of words.
Name and address, sir. Please state your name and address.
Murray Gulson, eight oh nine Park Avenue, South Bend. Say a few words to address, I think, some of the ideas that are out there in the popular conception about low-wage workers. Generally, we think of them, well, these are teenagers working at McDonald's. minimum wage at least as high as the minimum wage paid to all employees of South Bend upon the confirmation of that abatement. And since that time, we've had lots and lots of conversations, of course, among council people, citizens, and current business owners. And we've added some things to that to include that this would begin January first of next year, that it would clarify that we would include tip workers in the process for making sure that tip workers are compensated fairly as well. This is just an opportunity for us to actually live the words that our mayor set forth for us. His goal was that we become, as the city of South Bend, a model for equal opportunity and by making sure that any business that comes to South Bend that receives a tax subsidy of any kind actually lives up to our expectations and pays its workers a decent wage. It's just one way that we can begin to live out those values. And so, I'm very proud that the committee sought for to send this favorably. We had a few other things. One of the things we clarified, for those who've been following this, is that the business would agree to pay all workers the minimum wage that the city pays in that first year. But then the second year and subsequent years throughout the tax abatement, they would actually increase that two percent every single year. So, it's an exciting change to me because we want to make sure that we are not just supporting the people of South Bend and bringing jobs, not just jobs, but good jobs, but we're also being business friendly. We're paying attention to the needs of the businesses by making sure that they have some predictability as much as possible throughout the time of their agreement with the city. Doctor Wilson, can you talk a little bit more?
I just want to say a couple of words.
Name and address, sir. Please state your name and address.
Murray Wilson, eight oh nine Park Avenue, South Bend. Say a few words to address, I think, some of the ideas that are out there in the popular conception about low-wage workers. Generally, we think of them, well, these are teenagers working at McDonald's, but actually, workers who make less than $10.10 an hour are not primarily teenagers. Eighty-five percent of them are at least 20 years old. Twenty-seven percent are parents and 50% are women and 38% have at least some college education. And these workers make up 16% of the total workforce. Another point is some, sometimes we think, well, if we raise a minimum wage, people will lose their jobs. The most recent and modern research about this question, I think, has come to the conclusion that the effects on employment from an increase in the minimum wage are minimal and in some cases even positive. The problem with the minimum wage here in Indiana is that the Indiana State Legislature has mandated that Indiana's wage can't be higher than the federal wage. And the federal wage has been stuck at $7.25 an hour since July of 2009. So, really more than eight years. And with the rise in prices, that can buy less and less every year. So, the problem is if we, if the minimum wage had kept up with inflation, it would be $11.23 today. So, what we have of $7.25 an hour is woefully out of date, needs to be changed. Raising it and following the mayor's initiative to $10.10 an hour for companies that are getting tax abatements, I think, is only the right thing to do.
Finally, I just want to thank the co-sponsors of this bill, Councilman Kelly, Councilman Davis, and Councilman Gordy. Appreciate your assistance and help throughout this process and really everybody in the community investment committee, taking the time and in between all of these different meetings to really consider and think about what's best. How can we get to that win-win? And I think we got there tonight. Thank you.
With that, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Christine Fionless. I live at 1705 Wall Street in South Bend. And I just want to say, I'm very much in support of this ordinance. What we're seeing more and more in the society today, people like you making decisions, people in business, is something called the triple bottom line perspective. And that stands for people, planet, and profit. It used to be that we would only look at issues like this from the point of view of a dollar bottom line, what was best for that dollar bottom line. This bill, this ordinance, is showing that we're now starting to think about the needs of people as well as the monetary bottom line. And what we're finding, and when we make decisions from that triple bottom line perspective, the society as a whole is strengthened because we're taking into consideration not just one little aspect of the way we live together as a community, but we're looking at it from many perspectives and giving them all an equal place at the table. So, I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance and to continue down that road with other decisions that you make as a governing body of South Bend. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Janice Mueller, Executive Director of Community Investment Committee for this building. As you know, we thank Councilman Preston for bringing this bill forward and the administration enthusiastic police supporters. And we've gone through a lot of different language changes here. Unfortunately, I think we've identified one final issue. The policy still stays the same, that we're wanting to raise for a tax recipient in subsequent years by two percent the effective minimum wage. As it reads now, the language may suggest that if you start it higher than the minimum wage, that lowest paid employee would have to raise by two percent, which I don't believe was the intent earlier. And so, in the section three E, we're suggesting in the paragraph with the, in the year of the first year of the abatements, the lowest paid employee is compensated at least as high as the minimum wage paid to an employee in the city of South Bend, and that rest of that's fine. And then in the second part, in the second, subsequent years of the abatement, the effective minimum wage for the tax abatement recipient is at least two percent higher than in the previous year. It's exactly what we talked about earlier, we're just making sure the language matches what we all intended to do. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Just point of clarification to our council attorney, the language that we accepted for the committee meeting as well as the language we accepted tonight as the substitute, that is the language that matches.
Yes.
Doctor Mueller? Okay. They asked it.
It's not. I think what he's saying is that he had additional changes since we've had as a committee. Am I right?
Yeah, that applies.
Right. So, you have a few more scratches on that paper.
I apologize. Is it amenable to the?
Can you come up?
Yes. To the sponsors? Okay. If you wouldn't mind, just, yeah, just state the amendment and then we will consider the amendment. Sure.
All right. So, in the three, section three E.
Let me give it again.
Yeah. And then the first part, in the year of the, the first year of the abatement, then the lowest paid employee is compensated at least as high as the minimum wage paid to an employee in the city of South Bend. So, that's a change. And then in the next part, in the second and subsequent years of the abatement, the effective minimum wage for the tax abatement recipient is at least two percent higher than in the previous year.
Could I entertain a motion to accept that?
To move. Second.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much. With that, turn it back to the council for recommendation.
Make a motion to send as amended favorably to the full council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. City clerk, would you please read sixty-six seventeen?
Sixty-six seventeen. Public hearing on in ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend municipal code at chapter seventeen, article one, section seventeen four, to address procedures for downspout disconnections.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the health, safety committee met this afternoon and recommended favorably to the council.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Everett.
D.C.I.
Mr. Corvath.
May speed up the meeting.
He's here. Good evening, Councilman Janice Mueller, Executive Director of Community Investments working for this building. So, what we have before you is some amendments to the downspout disconnect program that was passed two years ago by the previous council. The goal is, the long-term goal is to get these sources off the combined sewer system. None of these sources were assumed to come off the combined sewer system in the modeling for, for the new long-term control plan proposal that's before the federal government. And the idea here is that we wanted to give a clear signal to people who own buildings or other entities that if the benefits of disconnecting are greater than the cost, we want them to do that. And if the benefits are not equal to the cost, in some cases, the cost of disconnecting, the downspouts are in hundreds of thousands of dollars because these pipes are inside walls, underneath floors, so that's just disconnected. Then you have to do something with the water, too. And some sites don't have places where you can store water. So, the effective kind of fee in the, of what would be equivalent to the benefits is assumed to be the cost of the long-term control plan. And as a policy, the administration and the council has adopted that we, like what we're bringing the federal government right now, the $200 million price tag over to one that's closer to a billion dollars. And so, you take the $200 million cost, it's going to be over the next 20 years or so, and then you assume every year you get benefits from doing that. And so, that ends up being over about a 20-year period. You'll get benefits past 20 years, but we think after 20 years is a reasonable place to cut it off in the calculation. So, there'll be about eight billion gallons of CSO overflow that's avoided because of the long-term control plan. So, you divide 200 million by the eight million and you get a fourth of, I believe, per gallon is the kind of, the cost benefit analysis. Then you figure out what the rainfall is per year and you get a gallon per cubic square foot or per square foot of impervious area. And that's what's before you. And so, if it's cheaper, so if you have, if you can get stuff off, or you get part of your impervious surface off of the combined system, you only pay for what remains, the square footage that remains going into the combined sewer, and it's a one-time fee. And so, we think this gives a lot of clarity because the old system was more for interpretation and feasibility. What was the, what was the threshold? What were the metrics? Here, we're looking, these are the benefits. If it's more beneficial, the cost is worth it, do it, we'll incent or we'll promote that. If it's not, we should have some sort of, you know, off-ramp that makes sense. Hope you have any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Back to the council. What's your pleasure?
If there was a concern to Councilwoman Broden?
I'm fine. Actually, let's go back, question, why the two and a half year delay on IV lease? And why can't it be implemented sooner?
Super?
Yeah.
I mean, this is a significant.
Plenty of consideration.
This is a significant. Introduce our long-term control plan expert.
Good evening. Kieran Fahy, Forward for Market Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. So, the existing ordinance that this is replacing, that already established that date, the date is actually an awkward date, November the 23rd, 2020. So, we just rounded it out to twenty-three year of 2020, so it's making it the December 31st of 2020. But I'm a lead-in period so that, most of this is a long-term control plan, so we're not trying to solve the problem immediately today. We want to make sure that, you know, the commercial businesses have an opportunity to prepare for this and to plan accordingly.
Well, clarify, we did push back the residential deadline to match the commercial deadline. And then we're giving an additional year of free disconnects. What we've noticed is this program, not everyone has awareness of it, and we really need to do a drive because this mandate is going to come upon us and we need to be prepared.
That was my follow-up question. Progress on residential and?
Previously, we had two dates. We had the date of 31st of December of next year, of 2018, when all residences in South Bend had to be disconnected. And the commercial, we gave them a longer lead-in time due to fact that they're basically larger buildings, they had a lot more work to do. And we had offered a free disconnection to the residences until the end of this year. So far, we have, we have the resources to believe that we can do this for another year to make sure that we can get the final, final homes, the houses that are still connected. And then we will give until 2020 to them to do it at their own cost. We estimate that there are only about 1400 to 1500 homes in South Bend that are still connected, that haven't either gotten an exemption or haven't applied. And we're targeting those homes specifically, so we believe that we're at a very high percentage of disconnections across the city at the moment.
Are those 1500? I mean, have we mapped those? Is there a concentration? And then I guess?
We have, we've mapped that. We know exactly where the homes are. We have, I, time permitting and some staff in Public Works and utilizing interns, we have, we have mapped that throughout the city. We know exactly where they are. We have a very simple smartphone app that we can use for, interns can walk the, walk through the city and we're able to actually very quickly map our segments, work by house and say connected, disconnected, or can't tell, or no downspouts, or taken a lot, things like that. So, we've got all that on a GIS there, and we know exactly where they are. So, we can target them specifically. We did with the, the property tax bills that went out last year, every home in South Bend actually through, obviously it was organized through a central county, but every home in South Bend got a specific notice. We've done it very simply where all you have to do is call through them on, there's no complicated process, they just call through them on, and through that we can, they basically have to sign a small indemnity to say that, you know, that the city's notified and we do the disconnection. We estimate that we have, as I said, 1500 homes. There's approximately between two and a half, which is an odd number, obviously, but between two or three downspouts per home. And we, it costs about, the city costs about $400 to $500 to disconnect. So, we've allocated remaining budget, we've made a budget this year, allocated funds for next year as well, and we're going to continue to target the specific individual homes. We know exactly the ones that need to be secured as well.
Thank you. So, we are back in the council portion?
Make your motion to send sixty-six seventeen to the full council favor.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read fifty-one seventeen?
Fifty-one seventeen. Public hearing on in ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for purposes of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning in January first of 2018 and ending December 31st, 2018, including all outstanding claims and obligation and fixing at time when the same shall take effect.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, I would like to say that the personnel and finance committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on bill fifty-one dash seventeen, and we send this floor to the council with the favorable recommendation. I would also want the record to show that the personnel and finance committee, as of October the 16th, we would have had seven, 14 budget hearings. And would like to thank the council, administration, department heads, and our city controller, and of course, the public for attending the budget hearings, for your input, but also for your recommendations as well.
Thank you. And is there, I already asked for any of them. Is there a presenter, please?
Good evening. Eric P. Bojic with offices upstairs. And do we have the?
Graham.
As that's being loaded, I just want to echo Chairperson White's expression of appreciation for everybody who worked on this, including the committee, the council, and everybody on the city team, too. There's been a lot of public input, a lot of discussion, and a lot of work, as always. It feels like each passing year, we get, I would like to believe, we're getting better and better at making sure that we really look at the budget from all angles and structure of the process that creates maximum opportunity for the community to show interest and really have that exchange of priorities between what council members are hearing from the residents and what me and the administration look forward. And I think that this is the best year yet, looking to 2018. So, thank you. There's a real emphasis on neighborhoods in the 2018 budget and making sure that on one hand, we're taking advantage of some opportunities that we haven't had before or opportunities that are coming to us in new ways. We've got chances to look at our parks and recreation assets, transportation, safety, human services like river childhood in ways that it's really compelling to be able to look at. And also, a number of challenges that have surfaced. None of these things are completely new, but many of them have the urgency. And so, even though the city doesn't always have the lead on things like public health, we've come to realize that this city's got to play a role. And we've allocated the resources in this budget to help us do our part. Building largely on the priority-based budget exercise that we've undertaken together, we've identified these areas of focus that account for most of the work and the resources that were reflected in the budget, neighborhoods, public safety, health and human services, business development, inclusive growth, capital investments to keep our city with the resources that we need, quality of place, which is helping fuel the human side of economic growth, regional economic growth and cooperation, which I think has been unlocked to a new level by opportunities like the regional cities' support that we're getting from the state, and making sure that in the city workforce itself, we're supporting an effective, motivated, and healthy and happy city. Again, I, in the interest of time, we'll try not to read slides to, in my packet, I've got the council priorities. I don't know if there is a copy paste error here, but just to reiterate what we heard loud and clear from the council during all the discussions that came up, a real emphasis on quality of life in neighborhoods, including making sure that there was the strongest possible residential development. heard loud and clear from the council during all the discussions that came up. A real emphasis on quality of life in neighborhoods, including making sure that there was the strongest possible residential development from community investment, and that the most economically challenged and perhaps historically excluded districts in the city were getting the attention that they reserve and require, not deserve and require. Making sure that we're paying attention to the affordability of housing here. Expanding lighting, knowing that the Light Up South Bend initiative's been well received and is deserving of expansion. Resources for code enforcement, talking about what comes next after the thousand houses in a thousand days, vacant abandoned properties, as well as priorities like economic development, public safety and traffic patrols, parks and recreation, infrastructure, attention to city corridors, and diversity of workforce. So again, hopefully that's in print out packets. Sorry that it didn't come up on screen. And these, of course, are the six major categories that appeared in our budgeting for our priority-based budgeting process that we developed in partnership with the council. Some of the new things are the things that will probably command the most attention because they represent large investments of resources. One is the MyISB Parks and Trails Plan, which is now underway with that groundbreaking at Charles Black, Howard Park, and other sites around the city. And again, I want to mention that we're really talking a third, a third, a third in terms of where the resources come from. About a third from outside sources, like regional cities funding, the cadet van contribution of the University of Notre Dame, amounting to $12.1 million. A TIF commitment that amounts to $14 million if you combine the bond with the cash that was put forward, and then the parks bond at $13.8. Collectively, it represents the biggest investments in parks and recreation that our city's yet seen. Also, of course, another high-profile project that we think could be economically transformative is the South Shore Relocation Project. We are also, as impatient as we are to make sure that we reap those gains, we're making sure that we stop and take a look at how we're doing it and where we're doing it, responsive to the recent council resolution, calling on us to initiate a second study to make sure that the best possible route is selected when it comes to the city supporting measures to speed up the train between South Bend and Chicago. You'll see again a greater emphasis on public health, health and human services more broadly, recognizing that the city has a role to play here from measures to address light exposure in children, residential light mitigation with a mix of federal funds, which have the benefit of coming from the outside but are also restrictive, and city funds which are more flexible, that can be used, for example, on measures short of the federally required full abatement on a home, which can be north of $20,000, but which we can use, we think, in 2018 to develop some of the most promising ways to help homeowners and families make sure that their homes are safe for light. We're also proposing to initiate a rental safety pilot program for inspections and allocate more resources for substance abuse and overdose issues that are affecting so many communities, including ours. When it comes to early childhood education, our intent is to build the capacity that we have in our mixed delivery system. So what we see is that there are a lot of different levels of quality when it comes to the pre-K education system in our community. We believe that an injection of resources from the city can help enhance the quality of some of the centers that exist, paving the way for future expansions of actual seats and getting more kids access to the program. But we know that if you don't have quality, you're often not going to be able to succeed no matter how many kids have access to the program. When it comes to community-oriented policing and keeping with the group violence intervention, it remains the cornerstone of our strategy. We have identified funds to support a strategic-focused outreach unit. This is working with community partners to make sure that we're doing everything we can to head off crimes, to break cycles of violence. And this involves street, what are called, street workers and supervisors in partnership with Goodwill. We think this is really going to be a powerful resource in trying to make sure that the city is going to become the exception to the rule of the cities across the region and across the country. We're seeing an uptick in violent crime last year and to go to this year. And permanent supportive housing, making sure that we're doing everything we can to allocate funds for sheltering, but also for trying to move people out of the cycles that lead to homelessness through SCAD and site permanent housing units, as well as identifying capital for a gateway shelter. Public safety, as always, occupies the majority of the general fund portion of the budget. We're funding 251 police officers and should mention we're continuing to proactively recruit because there remains a gap between the number of officers that we've been able to hire and move through to the academy and the numbers that are actually allocated, as well as all of the core programs that the police maintains as part of their year-to-year operations. Similarly, fire prevention, fire suppression in the cases out then, emergency medical services, all contemplated as part of the fire department budget. There's some capital items that you'll notice there, including what's called a hot classroom, which is another training resource that can help our firefighters prepare, and Fire Station Nine, which we think we found a good solution after a lot of dialogue in the neighborhood community, as well as vehicle refurbishment, for an ambulance and medic vehicle in a new area of trouble that the fire department is, which will be very important for our ability to meet their mission. And we have proposed to introduce the position of the director of public safety with the goal of making sure that all of the different public safety activities in the city, police, fire, emergency medical response, our participation in public safety access point, or PSAP, or 911 Center, the work that we do in the county framework for emergency medical, sorry, emergency management, the EMA, and anything else that may arise from crime prevention to emergency preparedness, benefiting from having a high-level integrated civilian oversight. We also think from studying places where this position has been used well, that there are potential budget savings in the long run available here. I would note that the proposal calls for a position that would account for, if you divide it by the overall spend on public safety, it's 0.0017% of a budget. That is 67.4 million when it comes to our public safety spend. We think there may be room to optimize that spend. And if we can achieve even a 1% savings on $67 million spend, that amounts to nearly $700,000 per year for the city. This, I should note, is a position that there's no one-size-fits-all. Some cities have moved in this direction, some cities have moved away from this direction. And I just want to note out of historical instance that South Bend had this position but has not for a very long time. There's also a great deal of interest in economic development and job training. This is again responsive to what council has been calling for. It's all I want to highlight that the community investment budget includes measures like small business and workforce development, pathways program, which is moving more people into the workforce and giving them the tools to do that. South Shore, which we talked about, expansion of facade improvements, which we're excited about, and continuing to drive that efforts to make sure that our city administration and our economic participation as an administration reflects the diversity of the community that we serve. In addition to the MyISB Parks and Trails Plan that I highlighted earlier, you'll see continued work on the city cemetery, as well as tree maintenance program that we think helps us keep our natural assets in shape. And I want to flag that there's been continued interest in the issue specific to downtown homelessness and panhandling, and that this average coordinator will be able to help us support our work there. Quality of life has been a consistent theme from the council as we discuss our shared priorities. Again, things we've heard loud and clear from the council include the need for stronger residential options available to residents, attention to affordability, more lighting, continued enforcement, code enforcement development, and making sure that we can answer the question of what next when we have properties that are often vacant lots that no longer have lives and houses on, but continue to pose a policy question in terms of their medium and long-term future. So in the budget, you'll see funding for new housing, being able to backstop financing that we think will leverage community resources. And you'll see resources for housing rehabilitation, traffic calming, support for the NRC to build up our neighborhood associations, support for our vacant abandoned houses work. But again, we're really moving to the next chapter of that and making sure that we're able to provide more good answers for what the future for some of these properties may be. Flashing beacons to enhance safety in school zones, the Light Up South Bend program initiated by council members, which has been a big success. And a move to support historic preservation, which has been recently overseen by the county, but we've arranged a dialogue with the county for a proposal that would see that overseen through the city, through the department of community investment. It adds to our budget, and we also think it adds to our ability to provide quality of life and vibrant behaviors. We have funded medium channelization devices out of interest from the council in expanding quiet zones. It's probably a moment to offer the update that it appears that the railroads have decided to exhaust until the last possible moment their window for complying with the quiet zone. This is despite some repeated and I would say lively conversation between me and other members of the administration and railroad officials. So their interpretation of the quiet zone guidance is that they would have until 11:59 PM this evening. If it goes one minute later than that, we will be aggressively and proactively communicating with both federal officials and railroad officials tomorrow morning to figure out why they're not complying. But our full expectation is that at midnight tonight, in all of the areas that comprise the quiet zone, that the train horns will cease sounding. But council members have asked the question, if there are some parts of the city that are quiet zone, why not other parts of the city? And so we are initiating with some funds to begin some of the medium channelization that's needed. I do not mean to promise that we can do this in one year or do this in one appropriation. We do think this pays the way for that work. There's also an opportunity to enhance the street escape at Lincoln Way and Charles Martin Drive intersection. We're fully funding the curb and sidewalks program, which council members have repeatedly stressed is important to neighborhoods and constituents. We're doing the energy savings contracts, I think all the more important in light of recent news that suggests that cities are going to have to lead the way on climate. I do want to mention that you're going to see big numbers here, but those are structured in such a way that the city collects the returns and should be made more than whole as we work with contractors to structure energy savings contracts. There's also green store water infrastructure that ties in with our long-term control plan, but also can offer benefits to the neighborhoods. And of course, we continue to support our water and wastewater work through the fees that go on to the water and sewage bill. Another priority identified in the priority-based budget is to make sure that all of our residents are empowered with education, mobility, and technology. And so some of the things that we can see reflected in the budget that we think speak to that, a dual high school credit program that does career development and kind of early window on fire department recruiting at the same time. Use scholarship front through the Vennies Parks and Arts Program, making sure that there's access for people of all backgrounds. The build-out of our metro net, which is, I think, sometimes the best kept secret in South Bend. A lot of cities are racing to develop art fiber infrastructure. We've already got it, but we've got an opportunity to connect more city assets like parking garages, parks buildings, and fire stations in order to save the city money in the long run on internet connection by tapping into this resource that we already have. And in the spirit of digital inclusion, building on what we've already done with the downtown wireless canopy and Charles Black and LK Center, looking at neighborhood centers where we can add the three white lights that the city provides. We continue to fund diversity efforts for the city workforce with recruitment, training, and intern programs to support diversity and inclusion, as well as an employee recognition program that we think has already allowed us to do a better job of making sure that we support our employees, and we're excited to make sure that we're able to carry that forward. And probably the biggest thing we're doing to be a great employer for great employees is delivering paid parental leave for either parent. All full-time employees should be covered, and we believe that we've allocated enough resources to allow us to do this. This is sort of the logical next step in our perspective to the 10-10, which at the council urging, we wound up delivering in two years rather than three. Now we want to make sure that we are leading by example, so that when we go around saying that employers in South Bend ought to offer paid parental leave, that first of all, we've literally put our money where our mouth is, and we think it's going to make our workforce better off, but also our community. We will, as you probably know, be integrating the way that purchasing is done in the city's central services operation. We think that this streamlined approach for purchasing will probably unlock savings we weren't able to see before, and continuing to build employee career paths and performance management going forward. There's something about heart transplant going on in the city's IT backbone, ERP system, which will come to replace Nadeline. If you talk to any city employees who have worked with Nadeline, you know that we're overdue for modernization of that system. We think it'll, again, lead to a lot of benefits and a lot of savings, but it's a major undertaking which is being contemplated in this budget. I also just want to highlight some of the payoff, because these are all some of the internal measures within the administration, some of the payoff. And one good example comes from our claims. So if you look at this year so far, $160,000 in claims you've just paid by the city. This could be anything from when you have some claim of damage done by the city in routine, let's say, vehicle making the rounds, all the way through to major high-profile legal settlements. This is down from $331,000 last year, over $1 million less than it was just a few years ago. So good work across the administration, not just by the legal team, but I would say training, better HR, better practices in communication, safety, and risk across the administration is yielding savings that have allowed us to see the claims on liability fund, which is $226 in the budget. Get a few of the reviews very happy with this. Don't want to walk you through anything too technical, but for the record, Lauren, make sure this is in there stating again that there's been a thorough process that we appreciate and that there are 107 active funds. But we really tried with the priority-based budgeting exercise to begin the talk, not line by line or fund by fund, but line of effort by line of effort, and explain what we're doing, what our activities are, so that we're in a better position to report how much we spend, for example, on filling a pothole or plowing a block with snow, rather than simply having a line of personnel somewhere, a line of supply somewhere else, and then trying to figure it out. So this brings us to this evening, October 9th, the public hearing on the budget. As of now, the vote would be scheduled at the subsequent council meeting. And of course, we have until November 1st under date law to make a decision on adopting the 2018 budget, so that it can be certified on time. Anything good after you hit return? All right. Well, if you want to know anything about revenues and expenditures, you can ask. The short answer is that the budget this year, you'll see general fund a little bit up, you'll see special revenue funds down. Some of that has to do with changes from year to year of timing of grants. And overall, this amounts to a $387.35 million budget. There we go. Here is our annual reminder that we're facing a predicted cut in revenues in 2020 when the remaining piece of the property tax reform that begins with the state picks in and affects South Bend. The estimates will try to be revised at least every year based on the latest actuals. The current estimate is that we will see a $2.44 million estimated reduction in 2020. If you include the TIF, that would add another 1.37. So these are not apocalyptic numbers, but they definitely require attention. And part of what we've been trying to do throughout is position our city to be able to handle and absorb any kind of changes and disruptions to revenue through a strong report. Income tax revenue's actually been looking better and better, but you don't want to count on it because it's so vulnerable. We have, it's like we have a recession, you would see the impact on income tax revenue almost immediate. But the continued economic recovery nationally and locally has benefited us, and we continue to estimate growth in that area for 2018. And I don't know why the pie charts didn't make it from PowerPoint to PDF, but if there's any great interest in the proportions of what activity goes to what, the city controller and/or I would be happy to take you into more detail on that. Quick note on full-time positions. Again, overall, generally down over light of this administration, but there is an increase in 10 compared to 2017. That includes police civilian positions, the city takeover of HPC, the public safety director that I spoke about earlier, a core admin function spread across HR, IT, admin finance, building inspector, and two code enforcement. finance, building inspector, and two code enforcement inspectors who were part of the rental inspection program, as well as an asset director in public works and civic innovation. Then you subtract two parks, rangers, and there's one retirement in human rights that did not require a replacement due to a rebalancing of the workload. So we continue to operate as a leaner, thinner city than we were in just a few years ago, but we hope that residents find that with those limited resources, we continue to serve well. About two-thirds of our employee base are in bargaining units represented by union, and this just gives you that breakout reminder, about half of our people in public safety, but a quarter in public works, and all the rest of us fallen in balance. Sorry again about this, seems like some of our graphics didn't survive the transition from PowerPoint to PDF, but this was just a reminder that the city once again got the budget presentation award, and the budget book should be available in 2018. And then, one of the reasons why we pay such close attention to our cash balances, I want to mention that the city once again has a double-A rating. That is the envy of most cities our size in Indiana, puts us among the top handful, and that is a credit to the difficult decisions that are made by this council and prior councils and in this administration and prior administrations. And we, it's very important to us to continue to keep that up. So departments representatives are here to assist with any more detailed questions about anything that we've gone over. I'm happy to field any questions as well. And the budget will get.
With that, are there any questions from the council at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for your presentation and your staff for all of their heavy lifting on all of this. I'll state again, I wish this wasn't an annual endeavor, that we could kick this to what our state legislatures do, but that's a battle for another day, another year. So my question is more one of process. The redevelopment commission has a substantial reference, and I'm looking, if anybody has a one of their scorecards at home, page 11 of today's handouts, expenditure summary, significant dollars, right, correct, managed, allotted, spent at, you know, by that commission, and commission-controlled funds. So here's just a question. Would your administration be open to structural change, the time when that particular commission meets? It is out of line with, with the exception of Board of Public Works, and I understand the number of individuals from across departments that go in, you know, to that regular meeting. But when I look at the attendance and I look at time of day, there's a mismatch there in its commission members and it is, in general, one department, okay, that is servicing those meetings. So I guess what I'm asking is, would your administration be open to making a recommendation and ask with the fellow council members in moving that to a more practical point of the day, a 3:30? And I know this is, again, the commission members make their own schedule, but I would like to see some support, given the significant decisions and dollars that are, you know, coming in and decisions that are being made, if that would be a consideration of your administration to champion having that committee move its working time, if you would, to later in the day, where there would be a likelihood of more individuals from the public being part of that. And I ask this question because I think repeatedly we all get asked the question, you know, how, questions about those dollars being sent, being spent, or if you would, rationale for the reasons that they are spent. So there's been terrific amount, and there's been terrific transparency. I mean, just every year, it goes up. Before I was on the council, now that I'm on the council, amazing job. But that is an area, I consistently get questions and I consistently hear it from meeting after meeting from the public, just an openness of the practices of that, not the practices, but just an openness, an ability to go to those meetings for the general public, simply by putting it later in the workday, where more citizens from the public could come. I think it would help on this back end, when we look at these budgets on an annual basis, where, I just think it would help tremendously. And I would just ask if you would be consider, you know, consider that as a recommendation and something that you could support.
Thank you. The role of the redevelopment commission is incredibly important.
Very much.
Obviously accountability is one of the five stated values of this administration, so we want to make sure it's as transparent as possible. I think the concern that you're mentioning has to do with, even though it's open to the public and media, you know, is there another time of days that would need more public participation? So very open to having an dialogue about what we do and answer.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor. Regarding the $25 million for the Ardmore South Shore issue, and I appreciate your decision with what you've done in terms of delaying that, would there be any, given the fact that you've already publicly stated about your intentions of delaying everything for the three months in a row, is there any way that, as that's written up, I don't know what the writing could be, that that is also included in our budget piece as that's submitted in there, that some dialogue to that?
So the thought would be maybe that some sort of companion or documentation within the budget would reflect that it includes this caveat that we're reviewing around?
Yeah. So that would match up the language that's already in that resolution, is already what you've already said publicly, just a lighter, that would help to give that some guidance as we, just to caveat around that thing.
Okay.
That make sense to you?
Yes, we'll find a way.
Your own language that you already used in your own press conferences, because I like what you said in your own thing, the recent ones that have shared that, so just take a lighter two out of that. That's my thing.
Yeah, we'll find a way to make sure that the budget reflects that.
Okay. When it comes down to the Wi-Fi issue along the city, will that also include looking at Wi-Fi at our city parks?
I know that's of interest. I don't know how much that is contemplated in the current item. I might, is that threat the entire park system? Okay, I'm giving the not, so yes.
So that's all, that's all the city parks we have? So I can go to Rum Village Park, or just sit back and back and just do it on the computer? Right? Up and out of that.
Well, whether Chief Innovation Officer, you share a little more about the info.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
That's why you guys are here. Might as well learn.
I'm Santi Avagar, sir. I'm the Chief Innovation Officer of the city with offices in the 12th floor of this building. So in part of the infrastructure plan that we presented to the council, we are including connections to all of the facilities where there's currently internet access. So parks where there's an existing facility where there's some hardware being, so not all of the parks have the type of infrastructure where we can locate equipment at this one, but all of the ones that have that infrastructure will be getting connected again. We're working on to make sure that Wi-Fi is available there.
Well, at least like a Rum Village neighborhood.
Yes, Rum Village.
I'm at peace, okay. No more questions for me in there. There are a couple more that I shared a little later. Two key things. Well, I thought I should hear, and then you can look at it. What are we doing in this budget to prepare for the 2020 issue that you just raised? Is there some screen that you could send us? How does your budget help us prepare for the 2020 financial cliff? What's the, like, key points that you can point to in this budget that does that? You don't have to answer tonight, just something that I'll, you can either email me or tell me later. Also, the same thing with the CSO, what's in the budget that helps regarding the CSO? And also, given what's happened today with the federal level, with the change of how President Trump's team changed that with EPA, how does that affect our financial plans? Would it come down to all of our CSO issues of what are we doing? How does our budget affect that? And, you know, the Panhandle even, what are some considerations given to the position in order to not only address downtown issues, but citywide issues because of the fact that it's spreading all over the city? We have them on every, well, not every corner, but a lot of corners. Western Avenue, Mayflower, it's going to be over there by the casino, a lot of the neighbors are considering that issue, and so that we already got quiet zones, but we're going to make HPC, somebody else is going to answer. Those are my key ones.
Okay, great.
I'm at peace.
Sure, you can mention.
Thank you. You go.
I would like to personally thank the administration, the mayor, and all within this budget reflecting a lot of the priorities in the council. I'd say for the last three years, we've been really wanting to address those quality of life issues, on curbs and sidewalks, through housing, just ensuring that our neighborhoods are safe and that they are thriving as well. I'm just, you don't have to answer this now, but in terms of your early childhood education, do you have certain centers you are looking at? How do you plan to interface the $100,000? And where those dollars be placed, and what are your outcomes?
We're talking about the address now, or?
Oh, yeah.
We can probably get a little more detail, too. The very short answer is that we don't have predetermined who we're going to work with, but the focus would be tied to the path to quality metrics. So every early childhood center gets a rating from one to four, where four is the highest quality, one is essentially that it's safe as a daycare. And our focus would be on moving our existing centers up that path to quality. Can we get a three to a four? Can we get a two to a three?
That would be helpful. My last question deals with historical preservation. I know that we've been, you know, having discussion within the budget, but what would that look like, you know, in terms of actually integrating that particular office within the city? And what are our expected outcomes? And how will we know that we've been successful? And the role of the county?
With that, seeing no other questions?
Oh, sorry. I did have some questions.
Sure.
With regards to public safety, it's an issue that has been, you know, on the forefront of a lot of folks' minds in the media, a lot of concerns for neighborhoods and residents, most specifically with policing. So I'm really curious about, and we had this conversation too, about, you know, with the new position of the public safety, Director of Public Safety, that's over $100,000 in this, your strategic focus outreach unit, $130,000, community policing, kind of very generally, but that's $600,000. I think one of the times when the chief presented, there wasn't really any specifics he was able to give, he said really everything we do is community policing, which was a little ambiguous for me. School resource officers at $780,000 roughly. What I'd like to see, not necessarily, well, I don't know, I have some questions about specifics on those things, like what does the $600,000 for community policing mean? You know, I know we have officers who walk the beat. Well, they already get their salary. Is that part of that $600,000? You know, is there something, programs or specific things that are happening that that $600,000 goes to? But beyond actually using city dollars for addressing this issue of violence in our community, which is something I know we all have an issue, a concern about, is reducing violence. We've talked about this before. How can we rather just focus on running to the police or running to our public safety officers, but work on the proactive end so that Chief Riscos, he talked about inreach, he talked about, well, we've talked about peace building, and what are those organizations that are in our community that we can partner with to help improve the work that they're doing or expand the work that they're doing? Restorative practices, we talked about that. So I'd like to know, where's the money in the budget for moving some of those or creating additional dollars, whatever it is, to actually fund the peace building end to reducing violence? Not just the reactive, kind of, okay, we've got a problem, how do we deal with it? So, and we have lots and lots of organizations who've come before this body, this council, different committees, to talk about their work. So I'd like to learn more about how we're partnering with them to do that. And also, as I have had conversations with you about with regard to public safety, still very interested in learning more about how we can reconsider what we're doing in terms of our citizen review board. I don't think that it'll take a lot of money. I think that it'll take a commitment from this administration to listen and to hear what the community has asked for. And whether it's restructuring or revisiting the Board of Public Safety, whatever it might be, I'd really like to see some language in here that addresses that and makes a commitment to next year, coming together and figuring out how we can be more responsive to that piece. So if we're going to get an administrator downtown that's addressing public safety, what I want to know, and what I think the people that we represent want to know, is how is that really affecting my life every single day, on the street, in our community? And I'm not sure. But one thing we have asked for specifically is that civilian review board. The other thing, and I'll leave it at this, neighborhood priorities, I want to thank you. I know that the administration has been responsive to housing, which includes the land issue, looking at renovating homes or helping to rehab homes and infill with new construction. That's fantastic. We need more, which is great. But also specifically with curbs and sidewalks, what I've noticed over the last couple of years, you always make reference to that, is, oh, yes, we're being responsive to the council. But what I've noticed is that that allocation doesn't go up, it simply stays the same. So I think for me, being responsive to what the council is saying, for me, it would be not just, oh, yeah, we're still going to do what we've always done, but actually saying, you know what, we're going to do more. So I'd really like to see curbs and sidewalks actually increase rather than stay the same year after year. Number one issue I hear about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 5117?
Please state your name and address.
Stephen Holmes, 1941 East Downing Street. I think the, there's a cabinet administration that's done a very good job of proposing this budget. The one thing that I am a little bit wary about is, because I've been keeping my eye on this story for the last two years in regards to the South Shore double-track funding, and I know that we, the city and the counties and the state has already gotten through their portion. I am reassuring fear that if we are re, you know, we look into maybe the entry point and actually.
And sir, I apologize. Please address the council with your comments.
Into the, to the west side of the airport, because as we know, this 50% of the $290 million project, as it comes to the double-track funding, is one to come from the federal government, and they're taking an incredibly long time getting their budget through. So I think that gives us a little bit more time to look at all of our options and reconsider it, because that is quite inexpensive, at least where I come from, that's a little bit of an expensive project. And considering that it would shave off about 10 minutes of travel time, I think should, for some reason, the double-track funding not come from the federal government, that we should consider moving that funding elsewhere. But assuming all stays on track, I think that would be a good use for it.
I want to commend the administration for what seems to be a sincere effort to try to really address the issues of neighborhoods, of affordable housing, of land, of early childhood. These are the kind of priorities that the Community Forum for Economic Justice has always seen as the most important and the ones that need to be addressed in the budget. I'm glad to see that there are important steps being taken to do that. Also applaud the administration's willingness to look at different alternatives for the South Shore. South Shore rerouting with regard to the airport and alternative sites. And finally, I just wanted to second what Councilwoman Broden said about the Redevelopment Commission. 9:30 in the morning is difficult for many people to attend. And also add one other recommendation, is that is to have the Redevelopment Commission provide a little more time during their meetings for public participation compared to the council, which, you know, is, seems to me, always welcoming public input. It's much different at the Redevelopment Commission.
Seeing no one else, we'll move to those in opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of 5117? Please state your name and address.
Chair Benicki, 3822 Ford Street. Anybody that's been to any of the numerous meetings knows that I've been paying attention to the wages. And I have in front of me a copy from the Teamsters in 2017. They got a 1% raise in 2018.
Oh, I apologize. Teamsters is a bill later.
Later.
Yeah. This one is just 5117.
Just give me a little leeway.
5117, please, Chair.
It's, okay, but they're only getting .75, and everybody in the budget is 2%. How dare they ask for more than what the backbone of the city gets? And I went through all line by line, and I've got pages of these big raises, and it's not because they've done anything but changed the titles. And if you go line by line, all they're doing is Mickey-moaning around these people. And two of them said that, well, we're eliminating this position but making it a new position, but they're, both positions are still in the budget. So I'm not in favor of this. I'm not in favor of the public spokesperson for public works. They don't need somebody to go, if Eric Corbath doesn't wanna talk to the people, then slam the door. But to hire somebody to speak for him to the public, I don't agree with. I don't agree with the public safety spokesperson. There's too much fluff in this budget. Thank you.
Chair, I also would like to point out that non-bargaining wages, Teamsters wages, police wages, fire, all those are in separate bills that have come up, and people will have time to speak on those.
Good evening. Dan Delmar, Southern Police Department, 711 sample, and president of the FOP Lodge. Here tonight on behalf of our members, and actually the taxpayers, too. And it's not so much to speak out against the budget, but just one portion, that's the Public Safety Director. I've emailed you all, you know, our concerns. That's money that could be spent elsewhere. We need more dispatchers. That could be tacked on the, that salary could be tacked on to help get more of them. I'm a policeman, and I might shot Chief Cox here, but the fire department, last I knew, was negotiating. Those guys, their medics, get run ragged. They deserve a little bit extra money, too. Then one other thing that's come up, because we're fortunate enough that our membership is combined of retired and active, so there's times we get to see from the past what happened. And last Wednesday night at our lodge meeting, our retired members said, this is not a good idea, the Public Safety Director, we did it before, it didn't work. It adds a layer of confusion. And then thankfully, I was able to meet with the mayor, and it was good dialogue. We're always open to that. And looking at the draft proposal for the position of Public Safety Director, and then looking side by side with the duty manual's description of the job of the chief of police, it's redundant. The job descriptions are virtually the same. A liaison to the mayor's office, sure, but I don't think we needed $100,000 in doing everything the chief of police or the chief of the fire department's entitled to do. It's our belief, our membership belief, is the taxpayers deserve better than us. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in opposition, the public portion is closed. Could I entertain a motion to send this?
I make a motion for 5117 to send it to the full council favorably, but continue in the council portion only on 10/23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 5217?
5217.
Can, for just the public, can you explain that it's gonna be in council portion only, that being in the, in the, in the, in the...
Sure. Sure. So the motion is, this was the public hearing for 5117. It was continued in the council portion only, so there will be more dialogue at the council level and a final vote from the council, or a scheduled final vote on the 23rd of October.
Will that only take place in the afternoon, take place in the evening? What are we talking about?
The council portion only is in the evening, at the seven o'clock meeting. Again, there will not be a public hearing again for 5117, but the council will have dialogues on that issue.
No public input on the 23rd.
With that, would the city clerk please read 5217?
5217. Public hearing on in ordnance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for purposes of defraying the expenses of designated enterprise funds of the City of South Bend, Indiana for fiscal year beginning January 1st of 2018 and ending December 31st of 2018, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, public hearing on Bill 52-17. We send this bill to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Council of Jenham, College City Controller Office is on the 12th floor of this building. I will just echo what Mayor Page has discussed in his budget presentation as cumulative what's discussed here as well in the enterprise.
Is there any questions regarding 5217? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to...
Make a motion to send 5217 to the full council favorably and continue in council portion only on 10/23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 5917?
5917. Public hearing on in ordnance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year 2018.
Is there a committee report?
The Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, a public hearing, on Bill 59-17. We send it to the council with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Currie Malphler, South Bend City Clerk, officers on the fourth floor. Dear council members, submitted for your consideration is the ordinance that sets the salary for the South Bend City Clerk for 2018 calendar year. This ordinance increases the clerk's salary for 2018 by 2%, and is congruent with the proposed increase for other non-bargaining employees and other elected officials. So I ask for your consideration today, and I thank you in advance.
Are there any questions?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public portion is closed.
Make a motion to send 5917 to the full council favorably.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 6017?
6017. Public hearing on in ordnance of the South Bend Common Council, setting the annual salary for the common council members for calendar year 2018.
Is there a committee report?
The Public Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, and we send this bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter?
Yes, Tim Scott, President of the South Bend Common Council, 711, worst added. Before you is a ordinance to set the maximum increase for overall salary for the calendar council at 2%. And will be in conjunction with everybody else within the city. 2017 salary is $19,030. Go to 2018 at $19,411. That is my presentation.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, public portion is closed. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to send 6017 to the council favorably.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Eight to one.
Eight to one.
Motion still...
I get that.
City clerk, would you please read 6117?
6117. Public hearing on in ordnance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, setting the salary for the mayor for the calendar year 2018.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting on Bill 61-17, and we send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a presenter?
Good evening, Jenham College City Controller Office is on the 12th floor of this building. We are respectfully requesting, as with other elected officials in most of the city workforce, non-bargaining city workforce, a 82% salary increase for the mayor, taking it up to $18,710 for 2018.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to bring to the full council with a favorable report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 6217?
6217. Public hearing on in ordnance, fixing maximum salaries and wages for appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the City of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year 2018.
Is there a committee report?
The Personnel and Finance Committee met this afternoon. We send this bill to the council with no recommendation.
Is there a presenter?
Jenham College City Controller Office is on the 12th floor of this building. We have submitted our list of all non-bargaining and appointed salaries with a majority of them at 2%, those that were over 2% and the new positions were listed separately on a list given to council on September 25th. I'd also like to point out that within the wording of the salary ordinance, we also included information in the conference committee. That's the only thing we discussed.
Are there any questions from council members?
More of a comment, if I may?
Yes.
No.
Actually, let's hold comments until after public.
Very good.
Seeing no questions, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
Sue Castle, 402 Kennedy Drive. I would ask that the council give more time and leave public open on the salary issues, which there are some things that the Citizens Budget Committee would like to present to the council for review. So I would appreciate leaving the public part of it open. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. We'll go to comments from...
Just one quick comment. For several years now, we've just given straight percentage increases to the entire workforce, which is fine. There are times in the past where we've given, at some threshold, a dollar amount to people, I'm just gonna make this up, saying over, people who make over $50,000 a year would get $500, and people who make less than that would get a percentage, which would, sort of even things out a little bit. We've done that in the past in South Bend a number of times. And I noticed in the newspaper that Mitchell Walker did that this year. So I think that's something that we should just consider next year.
And just a quick comment before we make a recommendation. Although the public portion will be closed for comments next meeting, council still can receive information that is submitted to the council prior to the meetings. Also, I believe there's going to be a meeting next Monday to address a number of other budget items, so there will be an opportunity there to comment, but also if you'd like to submit information before that meeting.
And Chair, it's still open for amendment and substitute?
Oh, yes. And it is still open for amendment and substitute, but in terms of public comment, there will be none next, in two Mondays, but there will still be opportunity to submit information and public comment next Monday.
Two questions. One, if we close the public hearing tonight, does, how does that affect Monday night's meeting?
It does not affect the committee level. Yeah. At committee level, you can still have public comment. It just closes it at the full council.
It's a committee meeting.
So we still can have public comment on Monday night?
The committee meeting, yeah.
Okay. Second thing, you just mentioned about amendments. So if there's changes to the bill or additions or additions, deletions, that does not generate a public action?
No, not when the changes in public portion are...
So there's nothing that generates a public action, there's just... Wardy's changes?
Nope. I'd like to make a motion to...
One second. Sorry. Dr. Byer.
I wanted to piggyback on Mr. Wardy's comments. It wasn't that many years ago, like maybe 10 or 12, when we had this huge discussion about the fact that there was extraordinary, there appeared to be extraordinary pay gaps between the highest paid and lowest paid employee. And we then laid the mark on this 2% as a fairly consistent number. And, you know, math is a pretty simple deal. 2% of a larger number is always a larger number. So if we continue this without doing some changes like Mr. Wardy has suggested, that gap just gets larger. So I think in a discussion in the future, I'm not sure what the appropriate approach would be, and there are probably various, but I think that deserves some consideration. In fact, we brought our lowest paid employees up to 1010 at Mayor Luda Judge's request a number of years ago, or a couple of years ago. I think it was a nice start, but we do have that, it doesn't change 2% of a bigger number, it's always a bigger number. So the lower end gets 2%, the bigger end gets a bigger 2%, if that makes mathematics sense. So I appreciate Mr. Wardy's comments on that, and I think it's something we should look at.
We had a discussion of that a few years ago. We were talking about merit and wholesale, but I don't know how that whole discussion ended, and what stopped it.
If I recall, which I thought consultant was gonna be called in and study, looking at the different salary levels and how best to deal with the gap. And you're correct, the higher your salary is, the 2% has a greater impact than those at the lower level. But I thought that we were looking at bringing in a consultant.
Yeah, I couldn't remember.
And I don't know if that actually occurred, and if so, what were the recommendations? And we've been thinking about a previous administration, so correct me, but I thought that we were looking at, having someone looking at all the salaries to really bring forth and bring back recommendations as to how we can deal with this gap.
Could I ask of our clerk, and even the mayor's staff, if they could go and review the minutes of the, because we had several meetings, and that came up very productive recommendations regarding how we were to address that. And I would like for us to review what we said that we were going to do, and then maybe, I don't know, I cannot think right now, was that the end of Mayor Lickie's or right at the beginning of yours? I cannot, but some of those years blend in my head right now.
I think it was the end of Mayor Steeves.
Okay. So at the end of Mr., we had several meetings that were some great ideas about what we were gonna do. Were you right here? You came to Lickie's time, too, did you?
No, I didn't.
Get after. I can't remember. Okay, sorry. So, but I would really like, if we could go back to those notes and just refresh us what we said we were gonna do.
I'll see what I saw.
So we don't have to waste all our time and then look back, and then we can see how they still relate to 217.
Councilmember Broden?
Sure. So there's a number of positions, forensic lab tech, forensic scientist, etc., fingerprint examiner. Could you please remind me, and perhaps the public, as to where those are located? And are those civilian positions that aren't, are they now civilian positions that were formerly? Police, one question. So actually, question two then. And question three would be, do these recommendations on these salary adjustments, have they been, I guess, market tested, if you would? Are they comparable to what other individuals are doing in neighboring communities? And fourth question, how are they aligned, kind of, with our strategic plan in order to try to move some things more that... in order to try to move some things more that civilians could and maybe should do within the police department? I know it's loaded, but...
Okay. Christopher Boros, Athens, South Bend Police Department, Southern Longdale Sample Street. These positions that we're talking to, and those do comprise the ones that, for the police department, they're above the two percent mark, those are civilian positions. As Councilman Davis had mentioned, a while back, we were looking at the wages that the civilians at the police department were being paid. The reason being is that while, you know, police officers have the FOP to bargain for them, the civilians didn't have that. So we undertook a study of the civilians. And what we found is they were woefully underpaid. So last year, we were able to start the process of moving them forward in Indiana wages. Now, with these positions that we're talking about, this is the lab section for the police department. This is highly specialized. In doing a study with city HR, we found that when we did compare them to other cities within Indiana and even other states, we were so far behind what the wage nationally for these positions, that that is what we're attempting to do. We're attempting to, one, make sure that we can keep, you know, competitive with these positions, and two, to make sure that we're also looking at what it is to, you know, have it as far as wages for, you know, if these sort of people were to go elsewhere, that sort of thing. Making South Bend, as the mayor has done with these other positions, making South Bend as competitive as possible, drawing talent into South Bend. If you look at these lab positions, if we had to go and wait for a state lab to do this process, you're looking at months and months of waiting. Now, I don't know about you folks, but if there's a shooting in my neighborhood, I would rather have that evidence be able to be analyzed right away and processed so that our detective bureau can get on to, you know, finding these people and be able to work with the process office to getting charges, than to have to, you know, wait and risk, you know, the chance of more people being victimized within our city. So, long story short, is that, yes, we did a study, and we've looked at what the salaries are nationally, and that's why we're requesting this in this year's budget.
So does this year two, if I heard you correctly, does this close the gap, or where does it get us relative to that parity with others?
This, as far as when we're looking at higher civilians, we were able to take care of the majority of civilians last year. This will, you know, pretty much handle the civilians for the South Bend Police Department. And as I mentioned, when we're looking at the laboratory, very highly skilled, highly specialized training that is needed for these, and we're just trying to get competitive nationally, and even within Indiana,
Thank you.
for these positions.
And are there any vacancies currently in these specialized positions, or not? Are they all filled?
Yeah, currently, they are filled, or in the process of being filled. The one that we're going to have, the training position, will eventually take over for the current, one of the current personnel. So that will be, you know, just equal out in the long run. There won't be an increased position, if you will, overcounted it, or equal out.
Thank you for being here tonight and providing that additional information. I appreciate it.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send sixty-two seventeen to the full council with no recommendation, continue to public, or council portion only on ten-twenty-three.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read sixty-three seventeen?
Sixty-three seventeen. Public hearing on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar year two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty.
Personnel and finance held a committee meeting on this bill, and we sent it to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Representative.
General, how can help City Controller offices on the twelfth floor of this building? We are asking you to ratify the twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty Teamster agreement in accordance between what was filed last year. This year's letting includes longevity that was included in the Teamster contract, however, didn't make it in the ordinance show, submitted to council last year.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Back to the councils, oh, I'm sorry.
Sheriff Nicky, thirty-eight, twenty-two, Ford Street. If she'd, I've got to correct, you should be proud of yourself. You're giving Teamsters point-seven-five percent raises, while everybody else is taking at least two percent. Way to look out for the little man. Thanks.
Seeing no one else in opposition, the public portion is closed. I believe Councilmember Broden has a comment?
Since there isn't a representative here, and I did sit on this bargaining process with the Teamsters, it was an excellent process in terms of involvement of the council, the number of meetings, the expertise of the financial staff, and the component on longevity was actually something that was creatively put in to address the Teamsters', you know, specific needs for their membership. So I liked how amble we were, and how well the process played out, and just the terrific work by both our board of work staff, outstanding work, and our financial staff. So a year into the pro... A year after the process, I felt that it was important to state that again.
Questions?
Chair.
Yes.
Also, I'd just like to say that the Teamsters Complete Union ratified that contract, whatever that dollar amount is.
Exactly.
Are there any questions?
Well, similar to what President Scott just said. But do we need to... Is there any thought, or any need to delay, or we just need to move forward? Because they don't have a representative, or does that matter?
The Teamsters have ratified.
They've already ratified?
Yeah.
Okay, so with their ratification, I just wanted to be clear to those, Ms. Penneck and everything else, they accepted this, they accepted this agreement themselves, their ratification. So it's not that we are trying to put them down in any way. This is what their labor agreement accepted. I wish they were here to accept that, to voice that concern, but they have done that on record in the past.
And they were given a four-year deal where the two percent that's here today might not be there tomorrow. With that, I'd like to make a motion to send sixty-three seventeen to the full council in favor.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read sixty-four seventeen?
Sixty-four seventeen. Public hearing on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number ten-four-seven-two dash sixteen, and fixing the annual pay and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
The personnel and finance committee met this afternoon. We send this bill with favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a representative, please?
General, how can help City Controller offices on the twelfth floor of this building? We just asked for the council to reaffirm the contract that was negotiated last year through twenty-two.
Thank you. We'll go to the public, I'm sorry. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to the council, what's your pleasure?
For favorable recommendations?
Second.
To the council on, for sixty-four seventeen?
Second.
Motion to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send sixty-five seventeen to the full... Oh, we have to read it?
Continue. Continue.
Continue until ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I don't know, could I entertain a motion to move to bills continued in the council portion only?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read fifty seventeen?
Fifty seventeen. Third reading on it, well, ordinance of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the tax rate, the rate of taxation for purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending in December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Is there any comment from council members at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, send fifty seventeen to the full council in favor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read fifty-four seventeen?
Fifty-four seventeen. An ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's two thousand eighteen budget, and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for purposes of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year ending in December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Are there any comments from council members?
I just want to say that this budget has been presented, and our controllers here, and I think that it's gonna continue to move us forward to have good transportation here in our city of South Bend and in Mitchell Walker.
Make a motion to send fifty-four seventeen to the full council in favor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Could I entertain a motion for rising results to committee at the whole?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
They did all that last time, when it was a public hearing. So why do they need to do that now?
They have to. They have to stay there, better to stand favorable. And that's how it was when we were going back, because they continued it. They just have to stay there. There's no public hearing. It's in council portion, but you have to treat it like it's a...
Full council's now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading? Third reading to forty-eight seventeen.
Forty-eight seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending a section of chapter two, article six, of the South Bend Municipal Code pertaining to tax abatements.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Oh, substitute? Substitute.
Second.
All right. Let's have a motion on the sub, sorry.
So move.
Second.
As amended?
As amended.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I would make sure, I got this half agreeing to it, but, um, okay, motion on the substitute?
As amended.
As amended, it was in the committee at the whole.
Correct.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I apologize for that. Okay. Now, motion on passage of the amended version.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Member, Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Fifty-nine seventeen, please.
Fifty-nine seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the South Bend City Clerk for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
Move for passage? Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty seventeen, please.
Sixty seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for council members for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
Move for passage?
Second.
Bill sixty-seven.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
President Scott?
Nay.
Eight ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Sixty-one seventeen, please.
Sixty-one seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council...
Order, please, question.
Common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
Move for passage of bill sixty-one dash seventeen?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-three seventeen, please.
Sixty-three seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, fixing maximums, maximum wages of Teamster employees for calendar year two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty.
Move for the passage of bill sixty-three dash seventeen?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-four seventeen, please.
Sixty-four seventeen. Third reading on in ordnance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number ten-four-seven-two dash sixteen, and fixing the annual salary and monetary fringe benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
Move for the passage of bill sixty-four dash seventeen?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Fordy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, sixty-
Sixty six seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend Municipal Code at chapter seventeen, article one, section seventeen dash four, to address procedures for downspout disconnections.
Motion for passage? Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, fifty seventeen, please.
Fifty seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for fiscal year ending in December thirty first, two thousand eighteen.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Vice, I mean, President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, fifty four seventeen.
Fifty four seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Transportation Corporation's two thousand eighteen budget and levying the taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation of South Bend, Indiana for the fiscal year ending in December thirty first, two thousand eighteen.
Motion for passage? Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, let's move to resolutions, please, seventeen fifty seven.
Resolutions. Seventeen fifty seven. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for property located at two eleven West Monroe Street.
Yeah, it was a committee report.
Yes, Mr. President, we've done an accusation committee met this afternoon and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, presenter.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm John D. Little, building engineer, senior South Bend, offices at one twenty five South Lafayette. At the October fourth meeting of the area board of zoning appeals, a petition for a special exception use for a temporary here residence from December first, two thousand seventeen through April first, two thousand eighteen was heard and comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you, is there a presenter? State your name, address, and a brief description of the project.
David Nadeveen with Hope Ministries, four thirty two South Lafayette Boulevard. Our intent is to use this building for weather amnesty. Again, this winter, as you know, we have homeless individuals living on our streets and winter, we as a K, we need to provide them with housing to keep them from dying on our streets. So, we used this building last year under the emergency exception. We need to use it one more year. We're working as a mayor, with the city, as the mayor mentioned, on some initiatives to households permanently, but we know we're going to need to do this again this year and our Hope Ministries is building this.
Thank you, come, or questions from council members?
Just one, quickly.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I wasn't here for the committee meeting. I thought there was a clear understanding that this was only going to be a one-year previously exception. I apologize for missing the committee meeting, you might have addressed that, but what is the?
Yeah, when we, I don't know what, who that understanding was with. We met with all of the neighbors around, the neighboring businesses that are in favor of us doing this. I think what the community recognized is that if we're not providing weather amnesty, the problems to our downtown businesses are worse. So, we, we've been trying to be very proactive in working with our neighbors and the business community. We know the long-term solution is to get people off the street permanently. I think what the business community recognizes, things got a lot better on December first last year when we opened this building and they worked before that. And so, their feedback to us is, let's do it again this year because we know we need to do it.
Okay, and Suzanne, is that the same thing you're hearing? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else who was at committee? Dr. Burris?
Just so Mr. Furlet knows, I specifically asked a question, what is the long-term and what's the planned use for this? And the gentleman assured us that this is the last year of the use as a, as a shelter. I also asked, since we provided the resources to purchase it if and when, the intent is to sell it after this, as I recall, you know, will the city be reimbursed? And his response was that either it'll be used for a new product, for the proposed project, or depending on the city's wishes, it could be determined. So, we sort of want that circuit to get occurred because there were some people in the area that were concerned that we're going to want that to, long-term, another long-term unit in the same area. I don't think that was the intent when it came about, so it's, well, it's a matter of public record.
And that's why we put the specific dates in the zoning section that we're required to, but that's why we put them in there to verify that that's our plan.
Any other questions? Thank you, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of seventeen fifty seven, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against seventeen fifty seven, please come to the podium. Again, seeing none, turn it back to council.
Move for adoption of seventeen fifty seven?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, seventeen sixty, please.
Seventeen sixty. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three twenty five South Walnut Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Masterville Incorporated.
Great, is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investments sends this forward favorably, and I just want to say thank you so much for your patience through the budget process and waiting for this, so thank you.
Thank you, presenter.
Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development and Community Investment, fourteenth floor of this building. And with me is Rob Holick from Masterville. Jacob Alexander from our team has worked on this as well, so just wanted to recognize him publicly. Masterville's been a South Bend business since nineteen forty one, so it's an honor to work with them and partner with them to help them experience some incremental growth. They have evolved into an advanced manufacturer, making precision parts, serving actually a lot of other larger South Bend companies with parts and so on. They're seeking assistance as they invest over half million dollars in a few new pieces of equipment, create at least two new advanced manufacturing jobs that will pay at least eighteen dollars an hour. Working with them, we propose a five-year tax abatement over which time the petitioner will recognize savings totaling approximately sixteen thousand dollars. No, however, the petitioner will still contribute by paying approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in taxes during this time. We respectfully ask council to approve this abatement and assist a legacy business in South Bend as they continue to grow and invite rather than anything else if you like.
If the petitioner would come forward, just state your name and address and briefly explain what's going on.
Yeah, Rob Maholick, three twenty five South Walnut Street. So, we've won some new business over the past year and a half and seeing the trend in aerospace and more complex parts for a cheaper cost. We've identified some equipment that'll help us be more cost-effective and improve our, advance our technological capability. So, these will be, these jobs will be higher grade technically, so the higher pay.
Great. Council, any questions for the petitioner or the presenter? No? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen, seventeen sixty, please come forward. Back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you again for your investment.
Thank you for your investment.
Mr. President, for purposes of public hearing, could we hear seventeen sixty two and seventeen sixty six together? Second.
That's the correct answer.
And we can vote on them separately.
Of course, yes.
Yes, motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, go ahead, and Ms. Fowler, please read seventeen sixty two and seventeen sixty six.
Seventeen sixty two. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-three thirty-three North Kenmore Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a seven-year real property tax abatement for Tri-Pac Inc.
And seventeen sixty six, please.
Seventeen sixty six. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating a certain area within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-three thirty-three North Kenmore Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight, as an economic revitalization area for a purpose of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Tri-Pac Inc.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investments sends both these forward favorably, and again, thank you so much for your patience.
Presenter, name and address.
Again, Dan Buckenmeyer, Business Development, fourteenth floor of this building. Also wanted to just quickly recognize Austin Gemich and my team who has worked hard with Mr. Vikram Shah, the petitioner on this. Briefly, Tri-Pac is a forty-five-plus-year-old company presently located in Michigan. They are planning to relocate to South Bend in the area near Nims Road and Penmore. We're very excited to bring this business in South Bend, expect to create many new jobs and a lot of growth and investment as a result. In order to assist Tri-Pac with a soft landing in their new South Bend home, we propose two tax abatements on the significant multimillion-dollar investment they are making to bring their business here. A real property tax abatement of seven years on a minimum one million dollar investment on simply improvements to the building they're going to purchase, during which period the petitioner will save about eighty-four thousand dollars in taxes, but will still pay a total of approximately three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in real property taxes. And then a personal property tax abatement of five years on a one-and-a-half million dollar minimum investment in equipment at this new location, during which petitioner will save about seventeen K and will still pay a total of about four thousand in personal property taxes. We respectfully ask council to approve these abatements. I just want to point out again, this specifies a target investment of, combined between the two, about two and a half million, and target jobs of about sixty, but I know Mr. Shah can expand on that. That doesn't include the cost of the building and a lot of other factors of them moving here, so, Mr. Shah.
Sir, your name and address?
Vikram Shah, address is one seven three three six M sixty, Wenda, Michigan. Presently, we are ready, we got about forty people working there, and we looking, we hear a lot of good things about South Bend, and we looking for growth actually. We deal with global multinational corporations making consumer products and pharmaceutical products, and we have excellent opportunity to grow, and we think we can add a lot of, you know, good jobs, good paying jobs in the country. Normally, we have ever been contracts, you know, since, you know, or we work with the global companies, so they do a lot of regulations and all that, you know, so we looking for very, very, very excited to be, you know, looking at South Bend.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council members? Nope. Thank you, sir. We'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward for either seventeen sixty two or seventeen sixty six. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of seventeen, or against seventeen sixty two and seventeen sixty six, please come forward. Seeing none.
Motion for the adoption of seventeen sixty two?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Welcome to the first district. Thank you, and aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion of seventeen sixty six? Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, seventeen sixty four, please.
Seventeen sixty four. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, supporting the inclusion of three properties within the River West Development Area, Airport Area, namely, Leaper Park, the museum campus, and the city cemetery.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Yeah.
Oh, committee report, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Community Investments sends this forward favorably.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there a presenter? Name and address, sir.
Oliver Davis, eighteen oh one Madison Street, South Bend, Indiana. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. James Mueller, who worked along and partnered with this resolution. Also, Mr. Wagner, who's, was not here tonight, but he was here earlier, who continually reminded us about this situation from, that happened in two fourteen, where the Department of Community Investment proposed a resolution to reenterweight support for the city cemetery, the Center of History, and the Student Nature Museum, and Leaper Park within the River West Development Area and establish a timeframe for doing so. As you see, the purposes, it makes sure that we support for those changes, and instruct the Department of Community Investment to start a formal process as soon as we be feasible. And third, it sets a deadline of April one, two thousand eighteen, for that process to to begin. I was reassured again by Mr. Mueller, Dr. Mueller, this afternoon, that we're not waiting for April one to, um, the deadline, but we are working on that now. As we can see in our city budget, there is different funds that are targeting our city cemetery throughout the year of two fourteen. We had a lot of meetings and before that on the city cemetery that spurred a lot of this. And, uh, to time the director, Scott Ford, had talked with us and proposed everything else, but in the middle, several transitions, this kind of got put on the back burner. But again, Mr. Wagner continues, has his own way of getting things off the back burner to make sure that we proceed it in the right fashion. And tonight, we can complete that with your support.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? None.
Thanks.
We'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Seeing none, any from the public wishing to speak against? Seeing none, turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Seventeen sixty-five, please.
Seventeen sixty-five. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, supporting the city administration study at gray railroad crossings for the purpose of creating additional quiet zones in the city.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Health and Public Safety Committee met today and recommended favorably a substitute bill seventeen sixty-five, as amended.
Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? The motion carries. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, Tiff Scott, present, South Bend Common Council, seven eleven Forest Avenue, um, along with my co-sponsor Oliver Davis, Vice President. Also, we would like Karen White, our co-sponsor, and Regina Williams, Preston. Uh, on this resolution, uh, this was in conjunction with administration to look at quiet zones on the west side. You can see from the slide here, uh, everything in yellow is not a quiet zone. Everything in green is part of the quiet zone that the mayor just, uh, mentioned, uh, will go in effect as a one fifty-nine tonight, and hopefully we're not here when that happens. This is coming to the budget a bit late to try to get more funding than the hundred twenty thousand dollars that is into the quiet zone, um, initiative within the budget. Uh, it is agreed upon with administration that we would look at a study between now and the end of the year to see what we can do to turn the yellow pins into quiet zone areas. Um, you will see down south on Wallin, all the way to Ewing and Calvert, some of those are abandoned lines, but there is a potential, unless the railroads do not completely give them up, that, you know, they can become active down. But what we look at is the priority, which is running kind of through the lake area and , uh, along Western Avenue out of that type of thing, parallel to those, um, headed over to the east side. Norfolk Southern passes ninety trains a day, uh, through our city, and Grand Trunk passes sixteen a day through our city. And what we need to do is, is quiet those, uh, zones on the west side. It is a detriment to the quality of life for all citizens. Uh, it, there are studies out there that it hurts learning abilities and just regular overall sleep for people. And, uh, me getting up at five in the morning, I hear these things at three in the morning. So, um, what this would do is allow us to have an allocation, uh, once the study's completed. It might not complete all the, uh, quiet zones on the west side, but at least it's a start, and we need to show a significant change in twenty eighteen. Vice President Davis, you'd like to add?
Yes, um, the comments from Councilman Kelly today, uh, where he said that they had already started this on the east side, um, helped to give me encouragement because his conversation led us to understand that the administration's already aware of many issues, so they don't have to, um, be behind, and we can move forward with some of the ideas as they've learned on the east side, that we can move forward, um, in a rapid, um, pace to understand what we can do on the west side to keep this noise down. Because we all like to get good sleep, we hear it throughout the night. And like Councilwoman Preston said, this was one of the first questions that came up when she became on the council. So, this is something important for all of us on the west side, and we thank again Councilwoman White for, uh, joining with us. And I think this is something that we need to do tonight to have better script. Thank you.
If you would like to turn over our other two co-sponsors if they'd like to add anything.
I always like to add that I was honored to ask the other sponsors for their support.
Ms. Preston?
Likewise. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to support this. Appreciate it.
Two, two.
All right, thank you. Uh, that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Uh, yeah, I just want to point out that I'll bet some of those intersections are Tiff districts, so we may have stumbled upon a grade of, another grade of use.
Thank you.
I like that.
Thank you, and believe you remember the redevelopment?
Yes, sir.
And Gavin, you heard that? You heard that too, right?
So, that, I follow a question, because that's exactly what I was thinking. Um, I know this doesn't mention a specific amount for twenty eighteen, and I know we have, you know, prefer ones that are kind of the top tier to address.
Right.
Um, so what is in the budget, and can we look to expand that? And, and actually, are, are you looking to make a, an adjustment in appropriations mid-year, or?
Yeah.
Or what? And, and, yeah.
My first, uh, sales attempt was to get the hundred twenty thousand that's in the budget currently, or for twenty eighteen, that we'll all vote on, uh, the twenty-third, uh, increased to some amount. Eric Horvath was not sure what that amount would be, and it would probably be improper to just throw money into something not knowing what that amount would be. If, if there was not enough or too much, then there would be an allocation to move it somewhere else eventually. So, the idea was, let's study it, let's figure out what it would cost. We might have to do this in stages. When I looked at this in twenty thirteen, it, I figured as well as legal and everybody else that was on it, it was going to be about a million dollars. But that was the team studying it at the time. I think, uh, we don't know what it is. What I like is engineering is involved with it, and we come with scientific data on what that will be, and then we can look at what the funding is going to be. This might be, this might take a couple of budgets to get it completed, but the idea with this resolution is, is get it started in twenty eighteen, well, get it started now, and, uh, try to make some headway in twenty eighteen. So, look forward to coming back. And I also want to thank you, Joe Broden, for, uh, adding the amendment to look at this on a yearly basis, so we don't drop the ball, we keep it moving until, uh, we achieve the goals of doing one.
And given what Dr. Varner just stated, that could, um, even expedite, in fact, in my mind, it does expedite the time, because even if it is at that rate that you had quoted, um, that was based out of general funds concept, but it wasn't not taking into consideration any redevelopment dollars.
No.
And so, therefore, with the concept of those being in redevelopment areas, and with it also with peanut budgetary issues, there is, in my mind, there is no reason why this shouldn't take long, that long to be able to pursue this option.
I'm going to follow up with my question. I mean, I, this is a historical oversight, I think. I mean, let's just call it what it is. And I would like to see action, substantial action, on these top-tier ones in twenty eighteen. Um, and that was my first thought, was Tiff dollars, um, this is a, uh, just as good a justification as many of the other things that march across our desk, so.
A journey of a thousand steps starts with one, and that's this resolution tonight.
Great.
Uh, no more questions, we'll open up to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to the council, what's your pleasure? Move for adoption of substitute seventeen sixty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, uh, Chris Fowler, uh, would you please read the roll?
Council, Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you all.
Good night, Pastor.
Good night.
Seventeen sixty-eight, please.
Seventeen sixty-eight. A resolution setting a public hearing to consider superseding a confirmatory resolution and modifying a confirmatory, and modifying and confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as two-three-four-six-four Adams Road, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-two-eight, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a real property tax abatement for GLC SBDC two LLC.
The Community Investment Committee sends us forward favorably, and thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, Gavin. Go ahead.
Dan McMeire, Director of Business Development, fourteen Florida's Building. With me is Jeff Smoke, Director of Development at Great Lakes Capital, who is the petitioner. Slightly different angle on this, oh, uh, actually, before I move on, I just wanted to publicly recognize two people, uh, also members of my team or our team, that, uh, really kind of make this, uh, take some of these through, Angelina Bealow in the, the Department of Community Investment, who works a lot of the numbers on the backend, and then, of course, Van Dordt in the Legal Department, who really allows us to make sure we dot all our i's and cross our t's legally. In any event, um, this is a different flavor than what we've been talking about, is a, it is, we are asking for a modification of an existing tax abatement. We always want to use the best tool in our toolbox, uh, in our efforts to attract, retain, expand businesses in South Bend, bring in investment and job opportunities. About a year ago, a, uh, tax abatement was approved for this site, um, shown on the screen. Um, it, the tax abatement followed a, well, a call, just colloquially, an old model that wasn't in need, or was the only model we had in use at that time. Since that time, as council knows, we have, uh, updated some of our methodologies and some more aggressive tax abatement tools. So, we want to implement that best tool since this site in that time, since the old abatement was granted, has not been built upon. We really want to accelerate that to get a critical piece of commercial real estate inventory here in South Bend. We did have an instance, uh, just a few months ago, where a, uh, potential entrant, a potential manufacturer, was looking at us, we were one of the finals, and they announced recently that they're going to Alabama, where they have, uh, a ready facility to move into. So, uh, it's a great opportunity to have this available. Um, it would be a unique piece of inventory, and would, uh, be instrumental in bringing the next, uh, business to South Bend. Uh, D C I proposes a modification of the current, it's a nine-year tax abatement, to modify it into a six-year tax abatement that's a little more aggressive, during which time the petitioner will recognize tax savings stolen, uh, over a million dollars, but on a, about a ten million dollar investment. Uh, the petitioner will though pay, uh, about quarter million dollars in taxes during that term of the abatement. Um, and again, it'll accelerate the project, it's a good cha, I don't want to jinx the great weather we're having, but, uh, there's a good chance if the colds, you know, they could get shovels in the ground, uh, right away after we get this approved and so on. So, I don't know if Jeff did add anything, or maybe I've forgotten, and.
Just name an address, some brief comment, please.
Uh, Jeff Smoke, Great Lakes Capital, one-one-two West Jefferson. Just want to make the council aware of the opportunity tonight, and, um, I'm proud of this payment. Dan laid out pretty much all the facts, and, uh, we hope to capitalize on the success and the momentum out there with Dan in general and D C I.
Thank you, council. Any questions? Ms. Broden.
So, um, Mr. Smoke, the, if you could address, did you do this at committee, but, um, the missed opportunities, but then also, in, uh, layperson's terms, the financing hiccup that you ran on, into with regard to this project?
Sure. If you, uh, can recall, the first spec building we did, we had a master lease for the city, and so that wasn't one of the tools we utilized this time. So, to finance the spec building with no tenant, the bank has to get comfortable with it, and part of the, the cost hurdle is the operating cost in the first three or four years. And so, with the nine-year abatement, you know, the years, uh, two, three, and four, especially three and four, create a bit of an issue if there's no tenant. So, the, the increased cost there causes it to, it's making it much more challenging to get a bank to wrap their arms around it. So, the, the full abatement really helps them understand the, uh, the cost going forward should there not be a tenant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of seventeen sixty-eight, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against seventeen sixty-eight, please come to the podium. Turn it back to council, comment from Mr. Varner.
Yeah, I had, uh, as a member of the redevelopment commission, and Mr. Furley also was a member, is council appointee. Um, there's a bit of an irony here, in that this is in a Tiff district, in my mind, it's not, if you're in a Tiff district, um, if they don't pay any taxes, so what? The Tiff district has lots of cash. I mean, over the nine-year period, just, did we decide it was nine or seven?
It was six.
Oh, six, okay. Um, that, that, uh, money that will be paid, uh, over that, uh, time is inconsequential because the Tiff is, is quite honestly flush with cash. Um, going forward, I, I, and I've always been a supporter of tax abatement, uh, as far back as we can go. I think we're pushing an envelope that I'm not sure I want to go much further upon. Um, so when you speak with your development partners, uh, opportunities in the future, um, I'm not sure I want to throw this on the table all the time as a redevelopment commissioner, um, or be willing to, to accept it. You know, when we, we were crying for development twenty-five years ago, or twenty years ago, and tax abatement was something we had to do to get somebody here in this property. And if we've come twenty-five years, if, if we've provided all these abatements, if it's still necessary to get things done, then I'm wondering what we've done wrong. Because as the development happens, as things come into town, I think there should be a point in time in which you are an attractive entity as a city, whereby people want to be there and pay it reasonable, and pay their share, without avoiding the property tax almost entirely, which is what happens in this case. So, that's a subject that I think we have to discuss. Uh, and I, I noticed the first time on the, the existing building, the, uh, the Aloft Hotel, it was aggressive abatement. I believe there was an aggressive, aggressive abatement approved for the, uh, Mr. Matthews project. And, and if this is, if this is the way forward, I think we need to work real hard on it, Dan. And I'm, I'm not sure I want to support it to this level going forward. That's, that's a heads up for anyone who's involved in it going forward. I don't want to query this deal, I understand we have an agreement, I'm happy to, but I just think we've got to talk about this. I'm afraid this begets the next, uh, level of, going forward, all of our requests are going to be for the aggressive abatement, so I don't know how long we can speak on that. Speaking for myself.
Sure. Regina.
Me? Um, therefore, I just wanted to bring up the point, um, that in committee, there were a number of, of citizens who spoke against this, um, who had a lot of questions and concerns for a lot of the same reasons I think that Dr. Varner just articulated, I won't go back through it. So, I'm just going to make sure, I'm going to vote against this tonight, um, because I think it's important that there's a record, that there's some faction of this community who is questioning these issues at this point.
Thank you, Regina.
Sure. Um, so, a couple council members asked for this, and we can maybe, uh, with James, maybe have, uh, just a overall discussion on, on tax abatement in general. But we'd just like to remind the council that, that previously for development like this, uh, we were looking at an actual Tiff investment almost guaranteed, uh, for companies to come in. Um, we've modified that, again, to reduce the city's risk in terms of putting capital in upfront, and really all but eliminate any sort of downside, just through a more aggressive tax abatement. So, again, we'd just like to remind the council, in the past, we were looking at typically a Tiff investment plus some sort of tax abatement, uh, to make it, development like this happen. So, I think we are making progress, but, uh, more importantly, I think, um, you know, in order to make development like this happen, and, uh, be competitive with other areas, I think incentives like this are important. So, we'll certainly support this wholeheartedly. And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt. Did you have one? I'm sorry.
Uh, just a comment. Uh, you do have to adapt to the times. I can remember forty years ago, when we were first allowed, uh, tax abatement by the state, that it was, uh, an important tool at the time. Um, still is. Uh, we modified it to try to make it more responsive to, uh, other needs in the community over the years. And, uh, you just have to keep in mind that, uh, you have to try to utilize every advantage, uh, the state will give you to try to, to try to spur, uh, development. And, and in this case, I agree with, uh, you know, Dr. Varner especially, that, uh, that we have to be careful not to set a precedent to being, considering this an automatic thing. But at the other time, you, on the other hand, you have to be open to using what's available to you.
So, one, one question on that. Um, when, while we do support, while, at least for me, I support this, if the next person that comes behind asks, they say, well, you did it for, um, the different places that have already been identified, how do we not then say that it's already been, uh, precedent has already been set numerous times? How do we, how do we fight against that?
If I may, uh, I would answer that just simply by saying, every single tax abatement is done on its own merits. Um, we have a number of, um, tools, both objective and subjective, that we, uh, run through that, uh, allow us to determine what that ultimate number or, or tax abatement granted will be. Um, I also just wanted to point out, as a point of clarification, the, um, more aggressive tax abatement isn't necessarily the only tool in our toolbox, but sometimes we're talking about a critical piece of inventory right now, we were talking about a new entrant before. Um, I think, if I didn't say, only two out of the four abatements we talked about tonight follow that more aggressive, uh, model, if you will. And if you look at these in total, we're looking at, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood, about twenty million dollars in private investment that these companies are bringing into South Bend. We're looking at about half a million dollars that still will be paid in taxes, uh, and we're looking at probably a hundred to a few hundred jobs that could come out of this, um, on just over a million, about one-point-two million dollar to, uh, total in taxes abated on all four of these. So, um, I, I, I understand that when we throw a lot of them at you like this, some, sometimes it's easy to, um, uh, kind of get cold feet a little bit, and, and wonder why we're doing seemingly so many. But we are doing two, and I think they're solid investments and solid partnerships. Just to put it in context, we're seeing a lot of companies that want to leave Illinois and come to Northwest Indiana.
Or version.
Communities like Hobart, Hammond, that are offering ten-year tax payments that are standard, ten-year, hundred percent abatements. So, just to put that in context, where this is.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills?
I want to add, just so expectation to manage, that there may be a, a small amount of Tiff that goes into our sewer infrastructure in the area due to insufficient capacity servicing both the C T D I building north of Adams and the whole complex you see here. Um, the, the amount that the bank actually needed for financing, um, you know, you're talking about all the tools and toolkit, um, you know, really the proposal they had asked for was more cash upfront. And we said, well, we have this tax abatement, can we bring some of the tax abatement from later years, earlier, to help minimize how much cash we have to go in? So, this is actually, to make this project work, we're trying to be creative, using the tools in the right way. And so, that's what this represents. But I wanted to be clear, that there may be some, some, uh, Tiff and cash upfront for infrastructure.
And you are?
I, James.
Joe Broden has a question.
So, um, disclosure on what that Tiff amount that we're looking at in terms of the, um, sewer improvements and capacity?
So, we don't, we're, uh, doing the study to figure out exactly what they are. They could be under two-hundred thousand, they could be, um, up to four-hundred thousand, I believe. Um, we don't know. But this will serve as the, the C T I building that we already approved, the spec two, and potentially maybe something south of, of the spec two.
Last, last for more buildings there. John?
Yeah, one, one good thing about this process is that it's out in the open, and everything is transparent, and we can talk about it here and vote on it in public. Uh, when I was assessor, and this kind of aggressive abatement wasn't available, it was only the assessor who could adjust assessed values. And, um, I was approached a number of times as assessor.
Don't implicate yourself.
No, no. It was perfectly legal.
Bob, you tell him if he needs to.
It was perfectly legal, uh, but community leaders would come to me from time to time and say, hey, if this, if you don't, if you don't forget X amount percentage of this, it was like a little tailor-made abatement. Um, whether it was John Hunt, or whether it was, uh, Pat McMahon, or, uh, you know, the president of a bank or something like that, would come and say, do this, or otherwise it won't happen. Well, I was a little leery of that, until I found out that the assessor was the only guy in the world who could actually do that legally. And there were times when it was done, uh, with a handshake. That's obviously not a good way to do business. And it's this kind of process that thankfully, now we can, out in the open, talk about the, you know, the benefits of the, of something like this, and determine whether or not we think it's worth it. Well, before, it was kind of thing that might have been legal, but it wasn't necessarily right.
It's late, but I'll add my two cents. That's why John ran for clerk, by the way. But no, we do, we do need to look at this. And I think we do get cold feet when a bunch of these come at one time, and then we decide we need to have a public conversation on it. We certainly do. You know, things that Regina has brought forth, other things that we need to look at on transparency, jobs, diversity, all that. We need to have those conversations on this. I do want to say, Jeff, I want to thank you guys for the investment in the first district down here. I remember when I first got on council, and John Farrar saying, hey, I need this big interchange here. I need all this stuff. And there wasn't anything there. And at the time, I said to him, if Portage Prairie came before me, if I was on council at the beginning, and there's members here that voted on that, I wouldn't have voted on that because our city was getting spread out too much. I'm more of a density kind of guy. Because the infrastructure's there, and we've got to repurpose. But what I said to him, if it's there, we need to fill it up. It does no good when it is nice, beautiful wildflowers and butterflies, and nothing's there. And we don't have sewers, we don't have roads in it. But we do have roads out there, and we had lights out there. And we're plowing and maintaining all those, and there was no businesses out there. I absolutely love the fact that this is getting filled in. We talked a little bit earlier today about putting, feeding that funnel or filling that funnel. You know, when I look at tax abatements, it's not the funnest thing in the world to vote for at the media, but I look at, in six years from now, this is off the roll, and it is feeding the future of South Bend. And every tax abatement that we have, depending on those years, are eventually feeding in at full price to the business, or whatever deal that they're coming. But what you've got to look at, within probably a year of this thing being approved, that you're going to have a hundred jobs. You're going to have a hundred new people living, working, spending money within South Bend somewhere. And hopefully, they're appreciating what's going on here. But they are spending money within that district, within the city. So Gavin, you were...
Joe. Joe?
So workforce issues. Is there bus transportation out there? This is a significant area that we're, you know, trying to bump up our employment. And for some people, that's a problem, transportation. So anybody?
Not yet, but we talked about this for the CTBI building. It is a concern to some of the employers out there. So we have approached trees, though, and it is something that is...
Smaller unit, more flexible.
Well, we had something that was, we went, we got close to out there, but it just has to have some adjustments that are made. When, back in the times when it was coming through early this year, it seemed like forever, but it's, yeah. We had some discussions. So it can be done.
The other concern, too, is, and I've talked to the chief about this, is fire and police. We do have police out there. I know supervisors run out there too as well that aren't really part, just part of that beat. There's a lot to cover out there as well. It is a concern. It is growing. And back to the traffic issue that we talked about before when Mr. Smoke was before us. So with that.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broton.
Aye.
Councilmember Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you for your assessment.
Being here late.
Thank you.
First readings, Ms. Fowler, sixty-seven, seventeen, please.
Sixty-seven, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing to bringing, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in German Township contiguous therewith, council manic district number one, four, two, four, six, zero, five, Cleveland Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to APC for eleven twenty-one and ZNA for eleven twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Sixty-eight, seventeen, please.
Sixty-eight, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and seeking a special exception for property located at four oh three Perry Street, council manic district number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to APC for eleven twenty-one and ZNA for eleven twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-nine, seventeen.
Seventy-nine, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. Street vacation, Eddie Street from Kobe Street, 180 feet Kobe Street from Eddie Street. West 90 feet Kobe Street from Eddie Street East, 230 feet. The first east-west alley between Howard Street on the west, and the first north-south alley east of South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send the board of public works for ten-ten, and public works property vacation for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy, seventeen, please.
Seventy, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at northeast corner of Niles Avenue and Cedar Street, council manic district number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to APC for eleven twenty-one and ZNA for eleven twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-one, seventeen.
Seventy-one, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at ten thirty-two Wayne Street, council manic district number four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to APC for eleven twenty-one and ZNA for eleven twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Seventy-two, seventeen.
Seventy-two, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Two, residential districts to amend average front setback provisions, Article Three, commercial slash mixed-use districts to remove maximum area requirements for outdoor seating for restaurants in the office, the O Office District, LB Local Business District, and the CB Community Business District, and Add Business District, and Article Seven, general regulations to allow requiring landscaping to be placed within the right-of-way of exempt and MU mixed-use districts from minimum parking requirements.
Motion to send to APC for ten-seventeen and ZNA for eleven thirteen.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-three, seventeen.
Seventy-three, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article One, basic provisions to revise clear-site area requirements and private street whiffs. Article Two, residential districts to revise grade level improvement standards. And Article Three, commercial slash mixed-use districts to revise drive-through facility standards.
Motion to send to APC for ten-seventeen and ZNA for eleven thirteen.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-four, seventeen.
Seventy-four, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article One, by allowing uses permitted in a less intense district to be permitted in a more intense district.
Motion to send to APC for ten-seventeen and ZNA for eleven thirteen.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-five, seventeen.
Seventy-five, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year 2017.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-six, seventeen.
Seventy-six, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2017, of $40,000 from the General Fund 101, $117,000 and $571 from the Park Fund 201, $25,000 from the Community Investment Operating Fund 211, $80,000 from State Seized Drug Money Fund 216, $2,733 from the Unsafe Building Fund 219, nine, ninety, $9,700,000 from Local Roads and Street Fund 251, $25,000 from the Police Grant Fund 292, $90,000 from the Federal Drug Enforcement Fund 299, $362 from the Zoo Endowment Fund 403, $40,000 from the Parks Capital Fund 405, $11,755 from the Project Relief Fund 655, and $396,500 from the Smart Streets Debt Service Fund 756.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
I don't know about drug money. Is that opposition? No, I'm good.
Next, seventy, seven, seventeen, please.
Seventy-seven, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations of 2017, of $20,000 from the EMS Operating Fund 287, $7,823 from the Consolidated Building Fund, Code Enforcement Fund 600, $100,000 from the Sewer Insurance Fund 640, $288,850 from the Sewer Works Operation and Maintenance Fund 641, $10,800 from the Sewer Depreciation Fund 642, and $200 from the 2011 Sewer Bond Fund 659.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Seventy-eight, seventeen.
Seventy-eight, seventeen. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending a section of chapter two, article six, section two dash eighty-four dash fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code pertaining to tax abatements.
Motion to send to community investment and personnel and finance for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. Twelve, seventeen, please.
Twelve, seventeen. An ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in Clay Township contiguous therewith, council manic district number four, for seventeen, three, three, zero, State Road 23, South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to APC for ten-seventeen, set for second reading with zoning annexation on ten-twenty, and set for third reading on eleven fifteen.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, again, invite all of the council and everybody out here on October 11, 2017, to Drum Village, at 10:00 AM for the dog park. Yes, indeed. We're very excited. Thank you, Mr. Aaron Perry and all the team there. I'd like to come out there and get all of our dog votes and support. So 10:00 AM Wednesday. Please come.
Any other new business? Mr. Boardy?
No, it's not new. It's unfinished. Earth, yes.
Owl, owl.
Unfinished series. Cubs want to the one.
That is new business. They finally started to win. Any other?
He's a Cardinal fan.
Out of work. Okay. With not seeing any new business, we'll turn the privileged floor. This is where anybody can come to the council. You have a right to address the council on any issue that is pertinent to the council. And you have three minutes. Please state your name and address. And you cannot talk, infer, or suggest anything that was on the agenda for tonight. Ms. Benicki.
Sharon Benicki, 38, 22 Ford Street. This refers to mandating landlords to register their properties. I came across somebody that tried to register their property after fighting with his assistant for an hour. And his screen says, please enter your method of payment. And it popped up American Express. And they tried to pop in their American Express, and it said, nope, we don't take it. So that card went flying, and I got another card, and he finally got it all done. And it says, would you like to print a receipt? And he clicked on four different buttons. And the receipt he got basically just says receipt. So then he found another spot where it said, would you like to download your results, which he did, just so he can have proof that he did it? And it printed out a bunch of garbage. So I took it up to code enforcement and asked them about it. And they said they are well aware of the problem, and they've been working with the department, with the director of innovation, who is supposed to be looking into it and working on it because the code receipt straight from upstairs doesn't give you any more information than basically these other receipts gave you. And they were supposed to be looking into it for me, and I have yet to hear back from anybody. So when you make these ordinances up and programs are put in place, somebody should be beta testing them to see that they actually work because your home state landlords would take five minutes with this, throw up their hands and walk away and say, let them come find me since I can't find them. Thanks.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Stateville, 1941 East Nollie Street. I understand that the yellow dividers that are now at our road crossings are to be in compliance with federal mandates, and it goes along with quiet zones. I know many times on my morning commute down Twickenham by Lincoln Way East, that sometimes trains have come to a complete stop before, which now that we can't turn around at those intersections or railroad crossings because of the yellow dividers, it's going to kind of cause a cause for concern for those of us who do go that way. So I was wondering if the council, or if the council has access to any departments or so on and so forth that can ensure that that kind of thing won't happen.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, a bunch of touch there.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Good night, everybody. Thank you all.
Hey, Tim. I need Tim. Tim. Hey, Tim.
You guys rocked it out. Good job.
Does she sing during the evening about that?
We make them chase.
We just sent the area.
And actually. They asked for a. That's, that's our.
All right, thank you. And thanks for representing the people, you know, everybody in the list, which are 2,000 followers. I tried.
Doesn't matter. We already did it.
So this is going a month later than this?
Yeah.
So we set it a month later. Kind of reconcile these dates and when I need to show up for all these hearings.
You know what I'm saying?
Right. No, I understand.
All of these are happening on the fourth, and I don't want to miss it.